Good morning and welcome to this April 11, 2017 meeting. Yeah, do you have to have one? Can you hear me? Thank you. Good morning and welcome to our April 11, 2017 meeting of the Board of Supervisors of Santa Barbara County here in the Santa Maria Hearing Room. Mr. Allen, would you call the roll?
Ms. Wolf. Mr. Adam. Mr. Lavignino. Mr. Williams. Ms. Hartman.
Here, and please stand for the pledge. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And next, we need to approve the minutes of April 4, 2017. May I have a motion to approve? Second? Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? The minutes are approved and we have a CEO's report. Ms. Miosato.
Chair Hartman, Supervisors, this is just an announcement to let our viewers know and the public know that next week we'll be having a week of budget workshops. They start on Monday. It'll be Monday, Wednesday, and Friday in the Santa Barbara Admin Building, starting at 9:00 a.m. And at the workshops, your board and our public will hear the department's work plans for the coming year. As you know, we're having some fiscal challenges, so departments will talk about service level reductions and also requests for restoration or expansions, and give an overview of our budget. So that's open to the public. All materials are posted to our website as well.
Thank you. So turning to our administrative agenda, we have three honorary resolutions, A-26 through A-28. May I have a motion to approve? And all those in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Would you read A-26 into the record, Mr. Allen? A-27.
I think we're going with A-27.
Sorry, yes.
And A-28 today. A-26 being an honorary resolution. And so, let's start with A-27. And A-27 is sponsored today by Supervisor Hartman. This is a resolution to commemorate Equal Pay Day in Santa Barbara County. And I want to announce that we're going to be presenting this resolution both in North County and South County. So we have, Pat Gravalla is here in North County. Pat, can you come on up to the podium? That'd be great. And then I think Jill Kingdom is in Santa Barbara with some other individuals, and Russ is there as well. So I'll go ahead and read the resolution into the record and then we'll make the presentation. Whereas, more than 50 years after the passage of the Equal Pay Act, women, especially women of color, continue to suffer the consequences of unequal pay. And whereas, according to the U.S. Census Bureau, women working full-time year-round in Santa Barbara typically earn 87% of what men earned. And whereas, nearly four in 10 mothers are primary breadwinners in their households, nearly two-thirds are primary or significant earners, making pay equality critical for families, to all families' economic security. And whereas, a lifetime of lower pay means women have less income to save for retirement and less income counted in social security or pension benefit formulas. And whereas, fair pay strengthens the security of families today and eases future retirement costs while enhancing the American economy. And whereas, the month of April and the year 2017 symbolizes the time when the wages paid to American women catch up to the wages paid to men from the previous year. Therefore, let it hereby order and resolve that the Santa Barbara County Board of Supervisors urge the citizens of Santa Barbara County and the state of California to recognize the full value of women's skills and significant contributions to the labor force, and further encourages businesses and employers to conduct an internal pay evaluation to ensure that women are being paid fairly. Passed and adopted today.
Thank you for honoring us with the resolution. And I just want to say that I represent the American Association of University Women, and I'm president of the Lompoc-Vanenburg branch. And I have with me today Leslie Sevier, who's a member, and Martha Hyte, who's a member of the Santa Maria branch. And our association is committed to supporting fairness in compensation, equitable access in advancement in employment, and vigorous enforcement of employment anti-discrimination laws. So our Equal Pay Day was observed on April 4 this year, and that date symbolizes how far into 2017 women must work to earn what men earned in 2016. So while the gap has narrowed, it still continues, and it is catching at a slower rate than it used to. So it is projected that it will be 2152, which I will probably not be here, by the time that women are paid equally as men. So we've provided each supervisor with a copy of a publication that was printed by our parent organization, called The Simple Truth, but talks about the gender pay gap. So again, thank you very much for recognizing us. And I think Martha has a few words.
Good morning. Martha Hyte, from the Santa Maria branch, I'm a board member. And I just have a very short paragraph to read, and this is presented by my AUW National Association. Many stay-at-home and part-time working mothers will eventually decide to return to the full-time workforce. And when they do, they may encounter a motherhood penalty that extends beyond the actual time out of the workforce. Experimental research has documented that employers are less likely to hire mothers compared to childless women. And when employers do make an offer to a mother, they offer her a lower salary than they do other women. Fathers, in contrast, do not suffer a penalty compared with other men. Many fathers actually receive a wage premium after having a child. Good for them, but didn't actually go through labor like women did. Thank you.
And can we go to Santa Barbara Hearing Room? Is there anybody there who would like to speak? Apparently not. Okay, so would you read the next item into the record, Mr. Allen?
Our second resolution today is Item A-28, sponsored by Supervisor Adam. This is a resolution proclaiming the month of April 2017 as National Poetry Month in Santa Barbara County, and recognizing the Orchid Academy students for their achievements in the Poetry Out Loud competition. And we have Sarah Rubin and Hannah Rubicava here from the Arts Commission. Come on up. We have Dennis Smitherman also, from the Arts Commission. Rhett Carter, Graham Colbara, Derek Sportsman, and Chloe Shelley. So if everybody would come on up to the podium. And I will go ahead and read the resolution into the record. Whereas, since 1996, the Academy of American Poets has designated April as National Poetry Month to highlight the extraordinary achievements and ongoing legacy of American poets, and to increase the visibility, presence, and accessibility of poetry in our communities and culture. And whereas, numerous presenters, including the County of Santa Barbara and the Santa Barbara poet laureate, are offering free public poetry events throughout the month, including First Thursday Cultural Nights that include poetry readings by the Santa Barbara poets throughout the county and in conjunction with the Santa Barbara Public Library. And whereas, the Regional Poetry Out Loud National Recitation Competition Program, through partnership with the California Arts Council, the National Endowment for the Arts, and the National Poetry Foundation, helps local high school students master public speaking, build self-confidence, and learn about their literary heritage. And whereas, over 2,000 high school students countywide from seven local high schools participated in the Poetry Out Loud event. The entries were students from Dos Pueblos, Cabrillo, Carpinteria, Laguna Blanca, the Orchid Academy, Pioneer Valley, and Santa Maria High Schools. And whereas, the Orchid Academy high school students, Chloe Shelley and Derek Sportsman, finished in the top two places in the county competition held at the Santa Barbara Board of Supervisors Hearing Room on February 15, 2017. This illustrates the Orchid Academy's commitment to outstanding literary education. And whereas, Santa Barbara County was represented at the Poetry Out Loud State Competition in Sacramento the weekend of March 12, 2017, by Chloe Shelley from the Orchid Academy, and she was one of 43 students from 39 other counties across California. Now, therefore, it be hereby ordered and resolved that this month of April be proclaimed as National Poetry Month in Santa Barbara County, and be it further resolved that the Board of Supervisors offers congratulations to both Orchid Academy students for their exceptional finishes and representation at the Poetry Out Loud Competition this year, 2017. Passed and adopted today.
Good morning, Chair Hartman and members of the board. I'm here today with Hannah Rubicava, who administers the Poetry Out Loud program for the county, and Dennis Smitherman, who is Chair of the Arts Commission. It is our distinct honor to introduce Chloe Shelley and Derek Sportsman, Rhett Carter, and Graham Colbara from Orchid Academy High School. Chloe and Derek achieved first and second place, respectively, in the 2017 Poetry Out Loud Competition. Their pool of competitors was almost 2,000 students across the county, and their performances left the judges in awe. This was truly a community effort, with past poets laureates serving as judges, as well as a professor from Allan Hancock College, who were all impressed by Chloe and Derek's incredible speaking skills, composure, presence, and interpretation of the written word. Chloe and Derek were supported by an incredible collaboration between the faculty and administrators at Orchid Academy. I think eight different faculty members, the largest cohort we've seen, collaborated on this program in a supportive structure that really enabled the Orchid Academy students to excel. These dedicated faculty members, represented by their principal, Rhett Carter, and Graham Colbara, helped Chloe and Derek to realize their incredible depth of talent and abilities. We are happy to welcome everyone to the podium to share with you how wonderful they are and how happy we are to have them today. Thank you.
Yeah, I can't take any credit at all, other than their security guard for the day. I'm just shipping them over here, make sure they get home safely. So the students, I'm proud to be a part of the lives of some special students that I work with at Orchid Academy. And Derek and Chloe are two great examples of that. So thank you for, you guys, for taking the time to set this up and honor them and their work, because they are special, special young man and woman. So thank you.
I also wanted to thank you for both recognizing the program and really all the different organizations that make this program possible. Honestly, as an English teacher and as part of our faculty, I can say it's one of the most rewarding experiences we have all year. We have all 600 of our students participating, and it's just a really great long month of working with students to understand language and performance and their society, and it just has immense rewards. So thank you so much.
Hello, we would just like to thank all of you for recognizing us and our school's program and the use of Poetry Out Loud as a teaching curriculum and a way to allow the students to express themselves at our school. So thank you for recognizing this, and thank you for recognizing its legitimacy, and thank you for everything.
Thank you, and maybe next year we'll get a chance to hear the poems. Does any supervisor have an administrative item that you'd like to pull? Supervisor Adam?
A-12, please.
A-12, I'd like to pull A-9. Any others? Okay, two on A-12.
Yes, Madam Chair, I'd like to pull A-5, just for a separate vote.
Any others? Any from the public?
Chair Hartman, members of the board. From the public, I have a request to speak on Item A-12 and on Item A-22. And I just want to note for the record that we did post an addendum on Friday, which in the first instance added Item A-29 to our administrative agenda. This was a resolution that was honorary today, honoring the court-appointed special advocates, CASA, for their contributions to the support of children and celebrating their new location partnership with Santa Barbara County. And also, we had a request that we withdraw Item D-5 from the agenda today. That's from Community Services. This was related to the draft fiscal year 1718 Action Plan and Draft 1415, 1516, 1617 Action Plan substantial amendments for the Home Investment Partnership Consortium. And if we could get a motion just to withdraw that item, that would be great.
So moved. Second? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. So would you read A-5 into the record, please, Mr. Allen?
Chair Hartman, members of the board. Item A-5 is from the County Executive Office. This is to consider recommendations regarding the proposed ordinance establishing a non-personal cannabis cultivation-related operations registry program.
Supervisor Wolf?
Thank you, Madam Chair, just wanted a separate vote on this.
I'll move this item.
And would you do a roll call vote, Mr. Allen?
Ms. Wolf?
No.
Mr. Adam? Mr. Lavignino? Mr. Williams? Ms. Hartman?
Aye.
Passes four to one.
And would you read Item A-9 into the record, please?
Chair Hartman, members of the board. Item A-9 is from General Services. This is to consider recommendations regarding the San Ynez Valley Airport's authority, its response to the San Ynez Valley Airport reviews in the 3rd District.
Thank you. And do we have anyone from the Airport Authority here today? Would you come up? I have a few questions.
Sean Knight, President of the San Ynez Airport Authority.
Thank you. Thank you for the great tour that you gave to me and my staff, and I was really impressed by what a tremendous job you do out there and how much money you bring in in terms of grants. With regard to your response to the report, however, I have two questions. The first has to do with the Brown Act training. And as I understand what you're saying, it's that you will give everyone a Brown Act manual on the board, and they will certify that you indeed gave them the manual. And I'd like to see if you could do any better than that, that they have some actual training, and that they attest that they read it or engaged in the training.
You know, initially, that's what we set out to do. You know, I think you may have been familiar, there's two parts to that. I was, I feel a fortunate recipient of training that I received from sitting on school boards here for Santa Barbara County when we were put into a workshop. And they worked with us to make sure we understood the Brown Act, and then also provided a nice handbook for us to use. We found that that wasn't available, given that we were separate from the actual county. So we went in to look for our own training and found that to provide it from a private service was going to cost us thousands of dollars. And so, this seemed like a compromise, finding a document that explained what the Brown Act was, how we needed to operate under the Brown Act, and that we had a signature from each and every one of our board members stating that they had received it and understood that we were operating under the Brown Act. I'm certainly open to some ideas. Everybody seemed to think that that was a satisfactory. I proudly say that we've been in operation, or at least the authority was established, I think, 25 years ago. We've never had any issue with any Brown Act violations until, I think, three or four years ago, where they told us something that we did was potentially a violation. We learned from that, we've moved forward. We've been very careful to make sure that we understood the violation moving forward.
I think at the very least, people would certify on the board that they have read and understand the manual, not just that they received it.
Okay, I can answer that.
Okay. And Item Number Three has to do with the inspection program for the hangars that you're supposed to have going by July 1, 2017. And I just wonder if you could expand a little on that and give us some insurance that it's really, that you're able, you've created an ad hoc committee, but are you able to actually accomplish the goals by 2017?
There's two parts to this. You know, just for some of those that may not understand, you know, half of the hangars on the San Ynez Airport are actually owned by the county. And so, we, as the authority, have a license with the people that utilize those hangars. That includes things like inspections. We're ahead of what the FAA is mandating, at least as far as the new rules coming out in July. The other half of the hangars are privately, obviously privately owned. The people who are in those hangars have a lease with the county, but they actually built the facility or bought that facility. Those are the more difficult ones for us, because we just don't have a vehicle in place that allows us to open those doors and just do inspections. One of the concerns that I had with this new rule coming down is the federal government will put new rules out, and unfortunately, again, they just don't give us the vehicle for enforcement in a variety of ways. The ADO down in Los Angeles that represents the San Ynez Airport, again, could only tell us that if we're in violation of any federal rules, it's just part of the grant assurance program that we put in jeopardy. And the grant dollars that we have received in this airport, you know, they ask that we adhere by the federal rules. I had explained to Ms. Pell in Jeanette Services that I think the best vehicle for us moving forward to make sure everybody's in compliance with a variety of federal and also county and state rules will be the review and the change of ordinance 3310, Chapter 4, which is outdated. That we may be able to put language in there that allows us to maybe do an annual inspection for a variety of reasons, to make sure they're in compliance with having an airplane in there, as the FAA would like to see, but also to make sure from the county level that we're not storing high levels of flammable fluids and stuff in there. Because we just don't make those annual inspections, nor do we have the ability to do that right now in the private hangars. We do in the county hangars, though.
And have you begun that inspection program for the county hangars?
We do that on a regular basis. We've done that ever since we, so if somebody has a license agreement with a county hangar, they understand that the aircraft that's in that airplane is owned and registered to whoever has that license. And a lot of the things that the FAA is handing us down has already been covered in our own local rules for those hangars. The issue is our private hangars.
And it's a very important issue, I think, if it's a safety concern. When will we hear from you next?
Keep in mind, you know, there's two parts to that. The safety concern is not being addressed from the FAA standpoint. They're just wanting to know, and the gist of the new rules is they're asking people that have hangars on airfields to use them for aviation purposes. And so ultimately, that's what they're asking the airport to do. There are bigger concerns, I think, that we have as the operators of the airport to make sure that we, the stuff that is in the hangars is safe. Things like flammable fluids and stuff, that would be more from a state and local. So that's the two issues that I think we're trying to combine into one potential solution, possibly with the update of the ordinance. We're meeting on a monthly basis. We have three new ad hoc committees, you know, basically to address the master lease that we've got with the airport, the new leases that are coming due for the private hangars, as well as the ordinance, and updating the ordinance as well.
And with the new leases, will you build in the authority to inspect?
The ad hoc committee ultimately will make a recommendation to the board. So I haven't seen what the ad hoc committee has put together in detail yet, but I expect that there will be some language in there to address that.
And again, I'm relatively new on the board. Do we hear from you on an annual basis, or will we not hear again for some time? Or what is, maybe Ms. Pell could answer that for me.
I'm willing to come in and update you as often as you'd like.
Okay, I'd like a progress report.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're good.
A-9? Oh, that was A-9, A-12.
Chair Hartman and members of the board. Item A-12 is brought to the board from the Legislative Program Committee. It's to consider recommendations regarding a proposed advocacy support position on H.R. 731, Carbhal, regarding the California Clean Coast Act. And I have a request on this from Mr. Caldwell.
And Mr. Adam pulled it, so let's have Supervisor Adam go first.
Well, I'll certainly listen to Mr. Caldwell before I...
Okay.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. Andy Caldwell, representing COLAB. And I could imagine that somebody could argue that, well, this is a recommendation for supportive legislation, and there will be no impact unless the legislation gets passed. However, the fact of the matter is, is on these board letters, you have boxes to check. And as we know, the oil is taxed as property. We know that we have probably three, two out of the top 10 property taxpayers are involved in offshore oil. And the other thing that people forget is offshore oil is not owned by oil companies, it's owned by the people. The oil companies lease the right to go after that oil, and then they pay a commission to either the state or federal government. So the oil belongs to the people, and the money goes to the government, except for that which the companies, you know, get a fee for. So what we're objecting to, first of all, we think this is an exercise in futility. This is tilting at windmills, considering the current Congress that we have. That you guys are making a statement and wasting people's time, but then there comes the insult to injury. So on the boxes, will this impact job growth and economic vitality? No. Will it impact fiscal stability? No. Fiscal impact on the county? Instead of checking the box "revenue decrease," they checked the box "undetermined." Well, you can determine that impact by taking off... Well, you can determine that impact by taking off two out of the top 10 taxpayers in the county. And the bottom line here is the oil industry has been historically important, and in fact, there's also another box there about whether it'll have an impact on the environment. Even UCSB admits that the seat tents and the drilling has reduced the oil seepage. And with regard to greenhouse gases, the seeps off the coast of UCSB equal the amount of cars and trucks on the freeway every day. See, the bottom line is if you don't drill, the pressure will increase, you're going to have air pollution. So this thing is wrong on so many different levels. We'd ask that at a minimum, if you're going to support the legislation, just at least be honest with the ratepayers and taxpayers and the citizens and check the right boxes. Thank you.
Supervisor Adam.
Okay. Well, just item seven on that same attachment, the word impact doesn't have any meaning there, because you can't tell whether it's positive or negative. And so you could check any box and they would, you could interpret it however you'd like to. So it has no meaning. And I just think that this whole thing is a grandstanding exercise and basically, I just want to roll call vote on it.
Supervisor Lavignino.
Madam Chair, that's why we brought it out of the Legislative Committee, is so that everybody could have a chance to voice their opinion on it instead of just the Ledge Committee. So I will, well, I'll wait for someone to make a motion.
Supervisor Wolf.
Well, let's just go back to that for a second. I think we do, I think Supervisor Adam brings up a really good point about the boxes. And we probably do need to take a look at, you know, we'll bring that back to the Ledge Committee and figure out, positive, negative is probably a good thing, modified form, because you could say job growth, yes, that, well, even fiscal stability or whatever, you could interpret it either way. So we'll take that as an action item.
And Supervisor Wolf.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I was just going to go forward and move this item.
Just a second. Any further discussion? Supervisor Wolf, did you have any?
No.
Oh, okay. So would you call the vote?
Ms. Wolf?
Aye.
Mr. Adam?
No.
Mr. Lavignino?
No.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Ms. Hartman?
Aye.
Passes three to two.
And A 22.
Chair Hartman, members of the board. Item A 22 from Supervisor Hartman is an appointment of Janet Blevins to the Air Pollution Controlled District Community Advisory Council. And I have a request on this from Mr. Caldwell as well.
Madam Chair, members of the board, I would say in the 26 years that I've been coming before the board, I've probably pulled less than five of these because we completely respect, or try to anyway, your appointment process because we consider, you know, it's just discretionary. And I served on the CAC at the pleasure of one of the city councilmen from Guadalupe for a time. This committee deals with highly, highly technical stuff. And even though I have a background in industry, it was hard for me to sit on this committee. And again, I'm not trying to make this personal in any way, shape, or form. I mean, it just talked to standards. Your appointment, and I've talked to different people on the CAC, they believe that she does not have the technical knowledge to really fulfill this role in a way that, you know, would serve your purposes and that she has a real problem being objective. And you know, I kind of think like an analogy with Supervisor Williams appoint me on an Earth Day Committee. He's thinking about it, but I think he decided no. You know, the point is, there's some people that the glove just doesn't fit. And what this committee's supposed to do is kind of look at a project and then look at the standards and the law and see whether or not everything's comporting versus somebody saying, I'm against the project. It's not the purpose, it's not the right venue, and we'd ask that you'd reconsider. Thank you.
I believe this is a continuing appointment, and I will give it some serious thought in the future, but I believe this is a matter of my discretion and doesn't require a vote. Am I correct? Mr. Gazoni?
Supervisor Hartman, under the APCD, CAC bylaws, the appointment is actually effective when filed with the Clerk of the APCD Board. I believe that through this item, you're informing the board and just being transparent.
Good. Thank you very much. So with that...
Chair.
Oh, Supervisor Adam.
Well, I was just going to tell Mr. Caldwell that he passed an opportunity to let something go that he probably should have, because I got appointees on numerous committees that Ms. Blevins would probably come up and bag on. So I think that it's just inappropriate to complain about these things because, you know, we get to appoint whoever we want, elections have consequences, and, you know, that's just the way it is, so.
So I'm hearing that you support reappointing Janet Blevins.
I think he's...
Just want to be clear.
I think he supports my discretion in being able to do that, but Supervisor Wolf, and then we will have a motion to approve the administrative agenda.
That was going to be my motion.
Thank you. May I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The administrative agenda stands approved. May we move to the, let's see, we need a motion to withdraw item number five. May I have that motion?
Yeah.
Do I have to do that?
We did that previously, so we're okay.
Okay. Sorry. All right.
Have a comment.
Onto general public comment for anybody who wants to comment on an item not on our agenda today. Got a little distracted here.
Chair Hartman, members of the board. I have one request to speak on a public comment from Barry Sigmund. Barry, you want to come on up? Thank you.
On a side note, I'm a massage therapist, and so I know what it's like to be in the other end of discrimination. It's a female-run, very dominant place, and I've felt the difference in pay, difference in appointments, difference many ways, so I can feel for those ladies. So I know what it's like. It goes both ways, unfortunately. But the reason I'm here is because I'm a resident of Los Alamos. I've been up in the city for about 30 years. And as Los Alamos grows, so does its crime. I know it's not Gotham City, I'm not claiming it is, but we do have crime there. And it's kind of the blight that we're seeing everywhere. We're seeing tagging going on there. If you look under the, there's like this creek that everybody walks down. It's a shortcut to the town, and it's always been really nice. And we like to take our dog down there every night and go for a walk. Unfortunately, there's been people down there that aren't the nicest. And they're tagging everything from death threats to people to, you know, curse words to, it's pretty bad. And the other night, my wife and I were down there a couple weeks ago, and there was a guy who was tagging, and he looked at us and he said, you got a problem? I said, oh, can I help you with something? I said, and he took after, started running after us. So here we are in our 50s and 60s, running for our life from taggers after us, and we were, all we were doing was walking our dog. It's a great place to go because you can let the dog run around and, you know, don't have to worry about getting hit by a car or bothering anybody. So, and then, of course, on that river, too, we have, people do motorcycles and four wheels. And they have tried to run us over. They kicked rocks in my wife's face and flipped us off and stuff. And we called the police, we called the sheriffs, but we're, you know, we're in Mayberry. And it takes a long time for them to get there. And I know they have to prioritize, and that's, you know, it's not the crime of the century. But it gets old. And then the other thing we're having now, it's escalating. Now we're having drugs. And there's quite a bit of activity going on with drugs. And so we called the sheriffs, and they've been very nice about it, very accommodating as much as they can, but apparently, from what I'm hearing, they're extremely short-staffed. They've gone from bad to worse. So I'm not really sure what the answers are, but one of the possibilities is maybe a substation or some kind of storefront in Los Alamos. If they know that there's a place there, that there's a sheriff every time to time, people might behave a little better. So I want to consider having better coverage there somehow, if at all possible. I know, I'm out of time.
Thank you.
I can talk.
I just would like an opportunity to respond to that because Los Alamos is one of the treasurers of the 3rd District. I was there at the library for the celebration of the Newsweek covers on Saturday. And we, I'm meeting with the leaders of the law pack tomorrow, and we'll be planning a community workshop to talk about various issues. So this will come up again, and we'll explore various ways to deal with it.
I'll be there.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thanks, folks.
Any other public comment? Okay. Turning to our departmental agenda, item number one. Would you write that into the record, Mr. Allen?
Chair Hartman and members of the board. Item number one is brought to the board by the Santa Barbara County Employees Retirement System. It's a hearing to receive and file a report from the Employees Retirement System.
And Mr. Levin, where would you begin?
Thank you, Chair Hartman. My name is Greg Levin. I'm the CEO for the Santa Barbara County Employees Retirement System, and it's my pleasure to present to the Board of Supervisors. And hopefully, the county employees are watching as well, because this is our opportunity to give an annual update and important information about our pension system. And so with that, I'll step into the presentation. I generally like to start by explaining the history of the system. We are what's called a 1937 Act county retirement system. We are a product of County Employees Retirement Law of 1937. And there are 20 similar systems that are chartered under the 37 Act, and Santa Barbara is the fifth system that was created under the 37 Act. We were established in 1944, and we have 11 planned sponsors. The biggest and the largest is the County of Santa Barbara. And for the purpose of this presentation and most of the information in this presentation, we give you a lot of financial data. You can assume that the County of Santa Barbara is about 98.5% of the system. You are by far the largest employer. Some other employers have no, are several small districts. I'm not going to read them off of the list that's on the screen. But we are also the pension for the Santa Barbara County Superior Court, excluding the judges who have their own pension. And the other large plan sponsor would be the Santa Barbara County Air Pollution Control The system's governed by an 11-member Board of Retirement. There's nine voting members and two alternates. Six members are elected by the various constituents groups, which include the retired members, the active safety members, and the active general members. And then four members of the Board of Retirement are appointed by the Board of Supervisors. Three of those four are members of the public with no connection whatsoever to the system. And one of those appointed members is actually a member of the Board of Supervisors, and that member is currently Supervisor Janet Wolf. And then finally, we have one ex officio member who's the county treasurer. And a little bit of history, before our system became independent, we were actually part of the county treasurer's office, and so that's why the county treasurer serves as the ex officio member on the Board of Retirement. The Board has a fiduciary obligation to the plan and to the members. Its primary obligation is to the members, in other words, to protect the benefit that was promised to the members. And then we have a secondary obligation to the plan sponsors. That's the County of Santa Barbara and the associated, and the related special districts. And that secondary obligation is, to the extent possible, to minimize and defray the administrative costs of the system. In this context, though, it's really important to note, and I've highlighted this in red on the screen, that the setting the benefits is the plan sponsor's responsibility. The Board of Retirement does not make determinations about the benefit level that's provided to the employees. That is, that is the job of the Board of Supervisors and the boards of the respective special So let's discuss the benefits. In 2016, the average annual benefit was $35,880. But when you break that down by general member, safety member, and APCD members, those are three broad categories because the benefit formulas for each of those categories are different. The general member's benefit is, the average monthly benefit's $2,400 a month compared to a safety member whose average monthly benefit is $4,854 a month. But when you're evaluating that, you need to evaluate that in the context of social security as well. So the general members in the pension plan pay into and receive social security benefits on top of their annual monthly benefit, whereas the safety members, most of the safety members do not participate in social security. And so there is a gap coverage, though, that comes from social security. The average member contribution for the plan is 5.77%. That increased 58 basis points from 2015. The reason it increased is largely due to the changes that resulted from the experience study, which we will discuss later on in the presentation. But let it be said, that the employees are paying more this year as a result, in addition to the county paying more. And then finally, it's important to note that the new pension reform plans that were put in place in 2013 by Governor Brown and the state legislature are substantially higher contribution plans on the profit of the employees. So in our 3% COLA, PAPRA plan, the employees are contributing 10.07%. So those employees who are newer and tend to be your younger employees are contributing substantially more than the employees in the legacy plan, and we'll show that in detail in a little bit. So across the board, the average monthly benefit is about $22,990, and we have 4,171 retirees on the bill as of June 30, 2016. So the key valuation results from this last actuarial valuation, and we'll go into greater detail on a lot of this information, but you can see that the actuarial liability for the plan increased 340.7 million this year. That increase was largely the result of assumption changes that were made as part of a triennial experience study process. Correspondingly, the assets only increased $22 million this year for a net change in the unfunded viability of $320 million. What that means in terms of our funding ratio is that it went from 78.4% to 71.5%. I want to stop there and talk about the funding ratio a little bit. If you are a follower of pension issues, a lot of people mention the 80% rule, i.e., being funded at a level of 80% or more is considered healthy. Being funded at 80% or less is considered underfunded. That really needs to be evaluated in the context of the assumptions that the plan is using. The funded ratio is derivative of the discount rate, and so as the discount rate goes lower, obviously, the funded ratio is going to go lower as well. And also, the contribution rates are derivative of what we call amortization. So a plan that has a more conservative discount rate and a shorter amortization period, both things which most would argue are good conservative financial principles, actually result in a lower funded ratio and a higher contribution rate. And so it's really important when you're evaluating our plan in the context of our peers, that you consider the fact that we are in a conservative place with the regulatory assumptions, and that that's a good thing, I would argue. I also like to remind everyone, and I apologize that it's not very easy to see on the screen, but that number there is 36%. 36% of our revenues over the last 20 years have come from the employer, whilst almost 60%, 58% to be precise, have come from investment earnings. And so what this pie chart's intended to show is the extent to which our investment earnings defray the cost of the plan. Really, one-third, two-thirds of the plan are funded in terms of investment earnings. And then employees consist of about 6%. And that number, that 6% number, we expect to increase over time, and we'll talk a little bit about that on a later slide. So it's been much discussed lately. This slide, you know, shows our 25-year investment performance. And I want to first talk about the slide and just explain the chart. The purple bars on the chart are the investment return in any given year. And as you can see, they ran... they range between a little over 20% down to negative 20%. The green dotted line on the chart is our assumption rate. So that's the target that we're trying to hit on any given year. And if you look very closely, you can see small decreases, a little downslope in the line there, a little downslope in the line there. Those are discount rate decreases that were put in place over the last decade. And then the blue line is CPI and we'll talk about CPI in a little bit, but CPI is a metric that tracks inflation and inflation is one of our building block components in terms of how we develop the discount rate for the plan and the assumed rate of return for the plan. What you can see here is that when inflation is low or trending down, those, those purple bars tend to, and a lot of situations tend to also be very low. It's very difficult to earn 7% or 7.5% in an extremely low inflationary environment where you're only getting 1% from inflation. What that requires for you to do is actually generate real return on top of inflation in a much greater amount than you normally would have to to meet your expectations. So what this chart shows is that over the last 25 years, we've averaged 7.63%. So that's good. Our discount rate before the change was 7.5% and you can see that over a long term, we're still tracking in accordance with our assumptions. But what this chart also shows is that this is really a tale of two periods in this 25-year period. The first 15 or so years were very high-return years. You have a number of purple bars that exceed that green dotted line by a large margin. And then the last 10 years, you have a lot of purple bars that fall short of that green dotted line. So you can see that the trend is definitely changing over time and as we go forward on this trend, that 25-year number is going to be getting lower. That 10-year number is largely impacted by what we call the Great Recession. That's those very big, large purple bars there that were negative in 2008 and 2009. And you can see over the last five years, we've done a little bit better, but still not as much as we had hoped and still less than our assumptions. So really, part of the process that the board went through was evaluating the forward-looking assumptions of the investment consultants and those forward-looking assumptions are much lower, they're much more in line with what you see in the recent trend versus what you see over the long-term 25-year trend. And remember that because this slide is going to show the funded position of the plan over the last 22 years. I apologize, we didn't have easy access to actuarial reports prior to 1994, that's why it's 22 years. But the green bars show the net assets held in trust over the last 22 years and you can see steady growth in the net assets. It's a nice line that's trending up, but you can also see the impacts of investment losses. And as I bring in the blue bars on top, what those blue bars represent is the unfunded liability. And so you can see, starting in 2001, after the dot-com crisis, there started to be the rise of the unfunded liabilities. And then there's also those purple bars and what those purple bars represent are surpluses. And so what you can see is during the late 1990s, during that dot-com boom, the system was very successful in investing. If I went back to the previous chart, what you would see is those purple bars were in a 15%, 20% range during these years. And so it made the, the plan look relatively inexpensive and well-funded and in fact, the plan actually had a surplus. And in that context, that was a statewide context and in 1999, Gray Davis put in place a new benefit formula for the California Highway Patrol. That benefit formula was a watershed moment in pensions for the state of California because it put a lot of pressure on local governments to increase pension benefits to compete on, from a salary perspective.
Would you hold just a moment? Supervisor Adam had a question for you.
I just want to make the observation that immediately following that was when you had serious unfunded liability begin and never end again.
And it was a combination of two things. It was the benefit increases combined with, right then, if I showed you on the previous slide, is when the dot-com collapse was in the late 1990s. So you had a significant contraction in the equity markets that year. And so it's not attributable only to one thing, but what it also shows is that policymakers in 2000, when they looked at the historical returns of the plan, had good cause to believe that these pension benefits cost less than we now know that they cost today. And so that, that trend continued and like Supervisor Adams noted, the unfunded liabilities began, but if you notice around 2006, they started to go away. And what you had was another sustained period of investment return. I think during that period, markets were averaging right around 10% per year and exceeding our investment expectations. But then also during that period, the county enjoyed significant property tax revenue growth because that period was the housing boom. And you saw property tax values rise a lot during that period and property tax is a major revenue source for local governments in California. And so in 2006, 2007 timeframe, there was another benefit increase. This benefit increase benefited the sheriff plant, this safety plant for sheriff, and that was an increase to what we call 3% at 50. And that 3% at 50 is the, is the benefit formula and what that means, for every year you've worked at age 50, you get 3% of your final average salary as your pension benefit. So if you worked for 20 years and you worked till 50, you would get 20 times 3, that's 60% of your final average salary as your pension benefit and you'd be able to retire at the age of 50.
Once again, Supervisor Wolf and then Supervisor Adam.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Levin, I think I brought this up the last time you showed this slide and just to emphasize that the, the Board of Supervisors implemented that, or voted on that in 2006, but it wasn't implemented until 2007.
2007, right. It's then.
Supervisor Adam, or were you following up more?
I'm happy to take the question.
I just wanted to put a little historical context down here. During the 2007 range, there was the apex of the housing bubble.
Right.
And so that, well, that when the housing bubble burst, that was when the recession. So at that point in time, when we gave that, that increase away and the same, same thing was going on at the, at the earlier incident of an increase, the party's never going to end. And the take-home lesson here is the party always ends and so never forget that as you manage these funds.
Right.
Okay.
Thank you, Chair. So you can see, as Supervisor Adam noted, immediately after that benefit increase was awarded, there was a recession and that was what we call the Great Recession and you saw the plan lose 30%, about 30% of its value between 2008 and 2009. And from that point on, you see large unfunded liabilities persist. And what, but what you also saw was about five years in, again, was the county began to recognize this challenge and put in, take steps to mitigate that challenge going forward. And so in 2012, the County of Santa Barbara put in what we call Plan 7 and that was a pre-PAPRA pension reform plan. It has a very similar pension benefit to PAPRA with the principal difference being that it has no cap on compensation like PAPRA does. And what's interesting to note about Plan 7 is it's also very similar to the plans that were in place in the 1990s, excuse me, down in this timeframe before that first benefit increase was, was given. So it really is, things come full circle and the plans that new employees that come to the County of Santa Barbara to get today are very much like the plans that were in place in the 1990s and plans that showed over a long timeframe that they could be funded reasonably and that they were manageable for local government. I mentioned PAPRA, so PAPRA comes in and then unfortunately, you have to choose what you present on these slides, but you can see then in 2016, this bar represents where we are today and that is out, that blue bar which extends a little bit higher up to about here is our unfunded liability and the green bar is the $2.5 billion in assets that we have today. So this is a great time to stop and talk about the county's pension contributions and how it is built, those two components to the county's pension contribution, those normal cost. Normal cost is what you as policymakers can really control. It's the expected ongoing cost of the benefit. It's the cost of the benefit that is shared between the employers and the employees. It is, the best way to describe it is the cost of the pension benefits that are being earned by county employees today as we sit in the room. I don't know what happened to the presentation there. Okay. And then the other component of that is the amortization cost. The amortization cost is the portion of the pension plan contribution which is designed to pay interest in principle on the unfunded actuarial liability. So that's the cost of having assumptions and this cost is paid, that's the cost of having assumptions that are imprecise, I should say. And this cost is paid by, solely by the employer. And so what that amortization cost is reflective of is it's the risk of the defined benefit plan to the employer. When you talk about other types of pension benefits, defined contribution plans, that risk is borne by the employees, not the employer, and that's a principal difference. But what's important to take away from this is that we are in a place today where the amortization cost of the plan actually exceeds the normal cost of the plan. So an amount over 50% of every dollar is going into pay for the unfunded liability as opposed to paying for the pension benefits that are being earned today. That's obviously a challenge for the county, but it's also a good thing because what that means is that much of the county's current pension cost really is what I would call is a financing challenge. It's going to be paid down over a set number of years and once that is paid down, assuming that we adopt those conservative assumptions that we've adopted and we meet those assumptions, you should see the eventual elimination of the amortization cost or at least a substantial reduction of that amortization cost. And we'll show how that works in a couple of slides, but the bottom line is that the employer cost of the plan on average is 38.71% of pay. So what that means is that for every dollar of pensionable compensation that you award your employees, you also have to provide 38.71 cents into the pension plan to pay for their pension benefit. So I mentioned setting assumptions. SB Service and the Board of Retirement has a process whereby we conduct a triennial experience study. This is basically required by California law. That experience study studies historical performance of things like demographics, how we do from an investment perspective, what inflation has looked like over the last 30 years. It also includes a forward-looking component when we evaluate what the investment markets and what the investment consultants are estimating they can earn for the plan. And in doing this study, the board relies on the work of its professional actuary, several investment consultant staff, and also legal counsel in making these determinations. And if you look at the chart on the right, what you can see is that this has been a long, slow process. In June 30, 2010, the experience, the triennial experience study was performed by Milliman, which is one of the larger actuarial firms in the nation. And at that time in 2010, they recommended a reduction of the discount rate to 7.25%. That was a substantial recommendation, reduction. At that time, the plan's assumption rate was 8.16%. And I want to stop there and also say that assumption rate and discount rate are generally coterminous, they mean the same thing. And in light of that advice, the Board of Retirement elected to go slowly and gradually and rather than reduce all the way to 7.25%, they reduced to 7.75%. But they committed themselves to a long, slow, and gradual glide path in terms of implementing those, those recommendations. And so then again, in 2013, they did another experience study three years later and the new actuaries, who is our current actuary, recommended another 25 basis point reduction in the discount rate. And the discount rate at that time was reduced to 7.5%. Now, a year later, in June 30, 2014, we had to address the issue of amortization and so the board adopted an amortization policy and the policy that they adopted was a 19-year amortization policy with five years smoothing. And why that's important is this was the first time the board recognized officially and kind of methodically as, as a matter of process, how they were going to gradually reflect the changes in the discount rate in terms of employee contribution rates. And so that brings us to today, which is June 30, 2016, our last experience study. The board elected to lower, lower the discount rate to 7%. But unlike the previous two 25 basis point reductions which were recognized all in one year immediately, this reduction is going to be recognized over five years. So it's, it's 10 basis points a year. It's a much slower, smoother process.
Supervisor Wolf has a question. Sorry to interrupt.
Sure.
Thank you, Madam Chair, but the, the five-year smoothing is, is based on policy and all of the options on the assumption changes that we had received at the board all assumed that five-year phase in, right?
Yes.
Okay.
And so it is a methodical change and it will not be fully implemented until 2022 is when you'll see the last of the rate increases related to the discount, discount rate reduction and also the changes in the demographic assumptions of the plan. And we'll talk a little bit more about what those demographic assumptions were. So at the Board of Retirement and at SB Service, we spend a lot of time managing risk. That is, the essential function of a fiduciary is to manage risk and one of the risks that we look at is the risk that we look materially different than our peers. And if you can imagine going back to Mutual of Omaha, it's never a good thing when the gazelle strays too far from the rest of the herd. And so we look at that pure risk and we evaluate where we are in that context. And what you can see is that we are in that blue column there at 7%. We're one of the four 37 Act plants that have adopted a 7% discount rate. What I can tell you is that this chart materially changed over the last two years with several plans moving down, not just to 7%, but several plans moving from 7.5 to 7.25. If you had asked me this question a year and a half ago, I would have told you that the median discount rate for the SAKERS plan was 7.5%, which is where we are. If you had told me, if you had asked me today what the median discount rate is, that median discount rate is about 7.3. So it's right here. So in total, in terms of total discount rate, our plan is a little bit below median, so we're on the more conservative side of those assumptions. But what that doesn't explain is how we got there. And if you look, there's two components to this discount rate. There's the component of inflation and there's the component of real return. Inflation is sort of the tide that lifts all boats. When you're an asset holder, inflation is a good thing, even though it's discussed in the press a lot as a bad thing. People tend to relate it to the cost of milk going up, the cost of flour going up. When you own assets, it's also a proxy for the growth in the value of your assets and so it actually helps your portfolio. And we look at inflation as that fundamental, fundamental bedrock sort of portfolio growth that we get. And then on top of that, you have real return and the real return assumption is what we actually think we're going to generate in the markets. In that real return assumption, you can see we are, we are at median for that real return assumption. Most of, exactly half of the California plans have a 4.25% real return assumption, which is what our real return assumption is. So what you can take from that is while we're on the low side of the discount rate spread right now, we are median in terms of what we think we're going to earn in the investment markets. Where we are a little bit lower than our peers is inflation and we have more conservative expectations of inflation than our peers. And so that's really how we are different than our peers. But like I said at the beginning of the slide, there's been a lot of trend down into this side of the graph here and I think you can expect that to continue over the next three years because these California plans are all on a different cycle for their experience study. And as more and more plans go through the experience study process in the next two years, I think we can expect that more and more plans will be lowering their discount rate. Probably the best indicator of that was the decision of the boards of some, two of the largest plans in existence, which are Calpers and Calsters. Calpers is a big state plan and Calsters is the state plan for California teachers. Both of those plans this year elected to reduce their discount rate to 7% over a couple of years. And so they're all heading generally on the same glide path as SB Services. And so they're all heading generally on the same glide path as SBSERs.
Supervisor Will?
Thank you, Madam Chair. There's, maybe you can explain, Greg, that, so SBSERs did reduce their discount rate to 7% over a period of time, but that's different than our five-year smoothing. Because I think some people think it's the same, but it's actually different. And maybe you can explain that.
So is your question about CalSTRS or CalPERS?
CalPERS.
CalPERS elected to. CalPERS has a similar amortization process to what SBSERs has. However, their amortization period is 25 years with five-year direct rate smoothing, whereas ours is 19 years with five-year direct rate smoothing. In addition to the five-year direct rate smoothing that CalPERS does, they also determined to step down the discount rate over a three-year period. So in effect, the CalPERS process is going to take place over eight years versus five years. And so they are, they're going a little bit more slowly. I think that's also reflective of the fact that their funded ratio is significantly lower than ours and down in the 60s. And so they are managing the transition to those lower discount rates in a little bit of a different way than SBSERs did. So I mentioned earlier that demographic changes were also a significant component of the rate increases. And Santa Barbara has had exceptionally positive mortality experience. And in plain English, what that means is that our members are living longer than we had expected. And to give you an idea of what that means relative to the total, we compare ourselves to CalPERS because CalPERS is a very large plan with a large statistical population to study, and they're located in California. And so they end up being a good benchmark for us to compare our mortality experience. And what we've seen is that SBSERs members are dying 20% less than CalPERS members are at the same age. And so when you put that into numbers, and it's a little wonky, but the remaining life expectancy at 65, and the reason we describe it that way is because if you make it to 65, you're likely to live longer past 65. But a lot of people don't make it to 65. And so if you include those people on the sample, then it drags the average down, the average life expectancy down substantially. But for, at 65, SBSERs expects that they're going to live another 22.3 years. So we expect that they will live to be, on average, 87.3 years old versus the average CalPERS member is only going to live 20.8 years, so 85 years. And that's important to note because in SBSERs, that means, well, just simply, we're going to have a whole nother year and a half of benefits we're going to be paying people. And so that drives the cost of the plan up, that mortality experience does. And what you can see is our actual performance over the last six years versus what we had assumed. And you can see for members that are 60 to 69 years old, over the last six years, we expected 72 of those people to pass away, and our actual experience was 61 people. Similarly, for 80 to 89, we expected 210 of those people to pass away, but our actual experience was 189. So it doesn't begin to equalize until you get into the 90s where our actual experience, if you think people passing away is a good thing, was better than what we had expected. So to summarize the experience study impacts and how they impacted your contribution rate, the impact of discount rate changes increased your contribution rate by about 1.84% this first year. And remember, we're smoothing in over five years, so those increases are going to increase, albeit at a smaller amount over the next four years. The impact of the demographic changes, principal mortality, increased your rate by 0.9%, so almost 1% of your rate increase was attributable to demographic changes. Your administrative expenses for the plan, that's the cost of our management operation, went up. We have a, about a 20-year-old legacy information system that we use to manage the pension system, and we need to replace that. And so we've embarked on a three-year plan to replace that system. And as a result, the administrative expenses of the plan are increasing slightly. Now, on the positive side, the employee contributions increased, and they reduced your contribution rate by about 36 basis points or 0.36%. So solely related to the experience study, the total county rate change over one year was 2.53%. But there's an asterisk though, because your rates only went up 2.16%. And the reason they only went up 2.16% is that because we are still phasing in some gains from 2014 when we earned 15%, which was almost double the assumed rate of return. So that's the difference. Over the next five years, the discount rate and the demographic changes will increase the county's rate by 7.15%. We're hopeful that that number will be smaller in practice because we're hopeful that we'll have another good investment year, or two or three at some point in the future. But of the total one-year rate increase, about 33% of that rate increase is attributable to demographics, and about 67% of that rate increase is attributable to discount rate changes.
Supervisor Will?
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is actually a question for CEO Miosato, and I don't know if you have this available. But as we go into budget, I would ask this question anyway. But that 2.16% amount, what is that in actual dollars? Do you know, or can you get that for us later? Supervisor Will? I know that we had estimated what that was going to be. I'm wondering what the actual amount is.
We can get that to you at the workshops next week.
Okay, thank you.
So this slide shows amortization layers. And earlier on, if you recall, on that slide, that talked about amortization versus normal cost. We discussed how the amortization cost is really what I would call a financing problem. It is an amortization over a 19-year period. And in theory, if we achieve what we set out to do, this amortization cost will go away. And the current year amortization charge is $71.6 million. But if you look at the chart on the right, what you might see is that gigantic blue bar there that dwarfs all of the other bars. That reflects each year's results from the system and the impact that it has on your amortization rate. So the bars that go to the right increase your amortization cost, the bars that go to the left reduce your amortization cost. So let's tackle the one on the left first. That was 2014. That was an investment year when the plan earned 15%, so almost double its assumed rate of return. That blue bar, though, is predominantly what's driving over 50% of your pension costs. And that blue bar is what we call our 2013 consolidated unfunded liability layer. So in the past, the Board of Retirement had amortized these liabilities over a longer timeframe. And in 2013, it made a decision to consolidate those liabilities into one amortization layer and to amortize them over 17 years. There's 14 years remaining on that layer. And so in 14 years, that layer goes away, and we hope that your pension costs will go down significantly. And I'm about to show you that. But what this chart also shows is, this chart shows your employer pension costs, and it shows it broken down by normal cost versus UAAL. And it's a projection that's based on us hitting our return assumption or our discount rate assumption. What you can see over time is that the employer normal cost is expected to reduce from down around 18% to, let's call that 12% down there. And that's that generally sloping downward line. And what that reduction is primarily attributable to is the implementation of PAPRA over the next 20 years. And as these new employees come on and they pay a greater percentage of their pension benefit, a greater share of the cost of their pension benefit, that will in turn reduce the county's cost. Now, let's layer on top of that the amortization cost. This is your financing problem. And you can see it goes up over five years because of the five-year phase-in recognition to the full rate. And then it goes out relatively flat to 2029. Well, 2029 is 17 years after, or I should say, actually, 2030 would be the first year, would be 17 years after the Board of Retirement created that 2013 consolidated UAAL layer. So what that shows is that once we pay off that layer, we expect your pension contributions to go down significantly.
Supervisor Williams has a question.
I've seen slides similar to this before that you've presented and then other has been circulating. I definitely felt like a lot of our fiscal decisions need to be governed by that imperative in the next 14 years. But can you give me an idea, because explaining this to the public is, I mean, it's really arcane stuff. So by 2030, you know, if our, either measuring by the level of unfunded liability that we have or measuring by the county's share of the cost, how would you expect that to change? Meaning, if the county portion right now is, you know, about 38%,
Right.
What would you expect it to be in 2030 if we stayed the course according to these projections? Or if our level of funding is 72%, what would you expect it to be in 2030?
That's a great question.
Because I think that's an easy way to explain it to the public.
So if investment performance matches expectations, that's the big caveat with this chart. And provided we don't have any significant changes in demographic experience, for example, mortality. And that is something to really think about as we think about a cure for cancer and self-driving cars. Because those are two major drivers of mortality. And so if those changes happen in the next 20 years, that could impact how long people live substantially. But with those caveats, what you really expect to see is that over time, there will be gains and there will be some losses, but you expect to see this line kind of smooth out into a straight downward sloping line. What we hope, all things being equal, what this model shows is that in 2030, you will have a contribution rate that's slightly above 20%, let's call it, let's really call it 25% to be conservative, but that it'll step down over a number of years. What this model actually shows is full funding in 2034, 2035. And what those green bars at the bottom would be, would be negative amortization, and not the bad kind of negative amortization, but the good kind of negative amortization that comes from having assets in excess of 100% of the unfunded, of the plan liability. So to answer your question, if none of the assumptions change, you would expect your contribution rates to go down to about half by 2034, what you're paying now. When you get to this point in time, though, I think what you, what we as policymakers would, and what I, staff would be bringing to the Board of Retirement, would be a discussion about plan risk in terms of investment volatility and learning the lessons from the past. And one of the things you could see out in the future is discount rate changes that would lower the discount rate again for the principal purposes, that would allow the board to invest more conservatively. And so it would be less reliance on equities, more reliance on fixed income with bonds that have more predictable income streams. And what that would do is increase the normal cost of the plan, but it would also greatly reduce the volatility, the investment volatility of the plan. And so it would be a lot more protection. It would be slightly more cost for the county, but more protection from the county that we don't have a reoccurrence of large unfunded liabilities in the future due to investment risk, which is what the lesson learned from 2008 was. Does that answer the question?
Yes. Supervisor Will has a question.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Levin, when we did the 17%, I mean, the 17-year amortization, so we're now, we have 14 years remaining, what are other systems at? What do, you know, how do we compare?
I think we are midline in terms of our amortization policy. We're really, I would say we're middle of the pack. 15 years, I think amortization, 15-year closed layer of amortization would be considered the gold standard by a lot of plants. Many of our peers are in the 20-year range, which is where we are. Some of the more aggressive plants are in 15, and then you have the larger plants like CalPERS and CalSTRS that are out in the 25 and greater range. And to put that in context, in 2008, you know, I would say probably the most frequent amortization policy was 30 years. And a lot of plans even had 30-year open, which means they don't layer, they just take whatever the unfunded liability is divided by 30, and that's what the amortization cost is. And the downside of that is that, I mentioned negative amortization earlier, you had negative amortization in those types of amortization policies, which meant you were never really paying off the unfunded liability. You were relying solely on investment returns to ameliorate unfunded liabilities. So we don't have that challenge. There's been a big push in the accounting community through accounting standard changes to make it very difficult for plans to have very liberal amortization policies now. And so to answer your question clearly, we are median in that area, and I could bring back a more formal analysis of it if that would be helpful to the Board of Supervisors.
How often does that, how, because I remember when we did that policy change to the 17-year, and that, but that was a Board of Retirement recommendation?
That was, yes.
And does that ever come back to the Board of Retirement on a regular basis?
It could be considered, it would traditionally be considered every three years as part of the experience study, would be when you would look at your amortization policies. However, it could be, the board has the discretion to consider it at any point in time, so.
Okay.
Supervisor Adam?
Go back to Slide 8 for a second. Thank you. One thing that bothers me about this is the PAPRA sign covers up, and you alluded to the level of the blue line on 2016.
Right.
And would you just show us that, because I have a slide in my book here that's...
So if I can hold my hand steady enough, our actuarial liability is about 3.45 billion. And so making a straight line across, it's about right there.
Okay. So in those three previous years, 14, 15, and 16, and what makes me say this is you just got done saying that we don't do negative amortization. But that's really what we've been doing here in, since 14, 15, and 16. Because basically, your green line is level. Your value in the fund of real money is level. But every year, our unfunded is going up, so that is negative amortization.
That, well, I would call that negative amortization. That's a product that the liability, which is the sum of the two, the blue bars and the green bars, is going up. And as it does every year, as your payroll grows and as employees accrue more benefits. What's happened particularly since 2015 and 16 is we've had relatively flat investment performance. And so we've extended the unfunded liability due to underperforming on investment goals, but then also substantially in 2016 due to the recognition of the discount rate change and the demographic changes.
Okay.
It's not, and I understand your position on it, it's just technically, it's not negative amortization, it's...
It has the same effect.
It does have the same effect.
Supervisor Lavenino?
It's definitely not positive amortization.
Yeah.
So I think that was the question I was asking before. So kind of the same thing is, is so that, does that amortization payoff over 14 years still incorporate the losses that we've seen over the last few years?
No, it does not. Those are in separate layers. And so if you come to this here, the losses that you've seen over the last three years, this is your 2015 investment loss, this is your 2016 investment loss, and then this is your assumption rate changes here. The thing to note, though, is that these are adjusted for the five-year rate smoothing. So over the next five years, this green bar will grow to be about 20 million. This bar here will grow to be about 6 million. This bar will grow here to be about 20 million. But all total, there's still going to be about half what that blue bar is once they're fully phased in.
Okay.
Supervisor Will?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just to highlight what you said about the... Thank you, Madam Chair. Just to highlight what you said about the 2016, that, that growth in the blue bar is reflective of the assumption change.
Yes.
So had we not gone from 7.5 to 7, and that, and we went to 7.25, that bar would have looked a little different.
It would have been more moderated, yes.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
By the way, I have a lot of questions, but I'm going to wait till the end, so we'll go back through the thing. So just not, well, we're just going to spend more time, I guess. Just don't want you to think I'm sleeping over here. I'm waiting.
I would never think that. So moving on, and we're going to turn a little bit here, and we're going to talk about some other interesting things in, in our plan experience. And I apologize, I did not know that the blue would overshadow the print here. But the dark blue bars here, and you can see for the general members, that's 27% of 876 employees. That is your PAPRA population. And on the safety side, you can see your PAPRA population also reflected in this dark blue pie here. And it's about 16% safety. And in terms of headcount, that's 145 members. And you can see the breakdown by the rest of the big, the big tiers that we have. What you can see is that Plan 7, which was the plan that was open to new employees, was only open to new employees about six months. It's now only open to reciprocal employees. And so you'll see Plan 7 remain a very small, excuse me, a very small plan. The, the largest plans are your General Plan 5C, and your Safety Plan 6B, or 4B here, that's fire and probation, and Safety Plan 6B here, which is your line share of plan. So that tells you, that's a snapshot in time of where you were at as of June 30, 2016, which brings us to the next slide. And the green bars show your active employees that are in legacy plants. And what you can see is that over time, you will see a substantial shift in the mix of your employment population, with the vast majority of your members becoming PAPRA members. We don't, we don't anticipate a lot of growth in the overall county workforce. This is a relatively low-growth county where if we had housing policies that, and things like that, that we thought were going to greatly expand the population of the county, and thus the size of the county workforce, this trend might be a little bit different. But for this county, we assume no overall growth in employment. So what this chart shows is the mix in the employment changing from legacy employees to PAPRA employees over time. And probably the interesting thing to note about this chart is what happens in the year 2021, 2022, when about 50% of the plan members will be PAPRA plan participants as opposed to legacy plan participants. And these plan, and so that also gives you an idea of who you will be negotiating with. So looking at the composition of the rates for each plan, the first green bar here is the basic normal cost. This is the basic cost of the plan. And you can see for each plant here, the costs vary. The normal cost for General Plan 8, which is our PAPRA plan here, is by far the most inexpensive plan. This is the plan here that most new employees are going into. Plan 7 is the other plan that new employees go to, but only reciprocal members, meaning people who have worked at another county, go into this plan. Then we have your legacy plants here on the left, which are your big general plants. 5B is your management plan. 5C is your rank-and-file general plan. This is your largest general member plan that you have. And then 5A is one of your older legacy plants that some general members have, but you had to be employed before a certain point, I think that year was 2005, in order to participate in General Plan 5A. So the next bar is the light green bar, and this is what we call the COLA normal cost. And this is the normal cost of the COLA benefit is. And I haven't talked about what COLA is, but COLA, C-O-L-A, is an acronym. It stands for Cost of Living Adjustment. And these pension benefits have a inflation factor built into them to protect the income security of a new tenant over time. And for the legacy plans, that COLA is 3%. So a new tenant's get a 3% increase in their pension benefit, I should say, an up to 3% increase in their pension benefit. It is limited by CPI for the Los Angeles area. For example, this year it was only 2%. And so that was the 2% COLA was given. There's some things on the side called banks that allow people to get up to 3%, even if inflation is less than 2%. But the vast majority of those banks have expired now, and only people who have been retired since 1983 have anything left in the, in their COLA banks. So for this year, almost all of the members got a 2% COLA. What's important to note about the normal cost of COLA is, this is an area where Santa Barbara County is a little bit unique. Santa Barbara County is one of three counties in the state of California that elects to pay the full cost of the normal cost of COLA. In many other counties, and statutorily, the, the plan provides that the employees pay half this normal cost of COLA. But it has been part of the county's compensation package for the last 30 years to subsidize that fully for the employees. The two bars that just appeared on the top of the screen are the amortization costs of the plan. And so you can see that's how we get to these 35%, about 35% of contribution rates. You'll see that the rates for safety are much higher on a, on a later slide, and that's what pulls the average countywide contribution rate up to 38%. So are there any questions about the composition of the employee contribution rates?
Supervisor Labanino.
Well, if you're asking for questions, yes, I do have one. So what, it's probably not for you, but, so we're one of only three counties that pays the entire COLA?
Yes.
Okay. Do we know what, or can you bring that back next week to tell us what the cost of that full COLA is?
I can certainly assist.
Yeah. And what, so I'm assuming the other counties pay half?
Yes.
Okay. So I just need to know what that number is.
So this slide shows the, the green bars on this slide reflect the size of the plan in terms of total pensionable salary. You can see that Plan 5C is your largest general plan with a pensionable payroll of about $95 million. Then the blue dots on this show the average employee contribution rate for each plant. And so what you can see is that your PAPRA plan, which is your plan that's growing right now, is about a $40 million payroll. But the employees in that plan contribute on average about 8%. General Plan 5B, which is one of your legacy plants, is your management plan. So that's what the unclassified managers participate in. They also have a higher contribution rate. And the reason why they have a higher contribution rate is that General Plan 5B is what's called a full-rate plan. Now, in comparison, General Plan 5A and General Plan 5C are called half-rate plants. And so that means that the county has elected through the collective bargaining process to, to contribute on behalf of employees for those plants. So that's why they have lower contribution rates. The age distribution of your general plants is, is very interesting. And what you can see is that a substantial portion of the county's workforce and general plan workforce is over the age of 50. The blue, the dark blue or green bars here are 50, people who are 50 to 60 years old. And the light blue bars at the top are members who are over 60. And I ran these statistics, I think about 40% of your general plan employees are over the age of 50. And that is, what's important to take from that is that means that they're going to be retired and eligible, and they are likely to retire in the next five to 10 years. And you can see substantially that over the next five to 10 years, that General Plan 5A will be for the most part going away. And so then we just want to emphasize the 40 to 50-year-olds there is the next big tranche. Those, those folks will move up. And at the end, you have these older members here. And why that's important is I think that, what that tells me is that you are going to have a significant churn in your employee base over the next 10 years regardless of other factors that may happen. And so I've gotten a lot of questions from the CEO's office in terms of the county budget process and how employees are asking questions. And there are different contribution rates between members of each plan. And if there are, for example, layoffs in the budget process, those layoffs are generally done on a last-in, or excuse me, first-in, last-out process, which means that older employees have job protections greater than newer employees. And so PAPRA members would be the ones that would likely be subject to layoffs if that was the, the strategy that was employed by the county. But what this tells me is that that won't impact the overall transition to PAPRA. That's going to happen either way as, because you're going to lose members to retirement.
And Supervisor Williams has a question.
Well, let me question that, though. I mean, yes, it, it won't change the way it's moving over time, but not everybody who's in one of those blue or turquoise bars ready to like, give up the towel now, right? So the, if we are letting go all PAPRA employees, all junior employees, and the, and that amount of those folks adds up into the hundreds, that's going to affect what percentage the county is going to pay, and that's going to increase the number, the percentage that the county is, is paying because we're getting rid of the people who are actually paying more into the pension system.
I think it's on an average basis, it's going to result in the county's pension contributions being great on a, a greater, because of the mix of employees, sort of on a percentage basis, the county's contribution rates. I don't know that that will affect the overall dollar, the nominal amount the county contributes to the pension, because if, if you did layoffs, you would obviously have a smaller workforce. And so that would, on a dollar basis, reduce your pension contributions. So.
Right. Just as we're getting rid of the ones who pay in the, the highest percentage, but also might have high productivity.
Right.
CEO Miasato, did you have something to add?
Chair, no, that was just pointing out that unfortunately, our civil, our civil service rules, which are comparable to other places, have new employees being laid off first. But as Mr. Levin said, if those are laid off permanently, it would mean that we're not having to contribute for those employees as well.
So this slide shows the, the employer rate composition for safety plants. And you can see that the normal cost of the safety plants is considerably higher than they are for the general plant. And that is primarily attributable to the pension benefit being different. Safety members have shorter careers. They have very physically demanding jobs, and they typically retire sooner. It's interesting to note that safety plan members tend to live just as long as general plan members. We don't see significantly shorter lifespans, which also means that they're on benefit for longer than general plan members. And they have, as I noted previously, they don't pay into social security, so they have a better pension benefit as well. The light green bars again show the normal cost of COLA. Those, that's the rate that the county pays for the normal cost of COLA. And that is similar to the general members, that is paid for solely by the county. And then the blue bars on the top show the amortization cost. And so what you can see is that for your big legacy safety plants, you have contribution rates in excess of 60% right now on the dollar, with PAPRA being a substantial reduction, bringing that well below 50. And if you just compare it in terms of normal cost, the PAPRA rates for safety members are about half what the legacy plan rates for safety members are. So as that transition happens over the next 20 years, I would say that you have a more optimistic future outlook in terms of what your contribution rates are going to be 15, 20 years out. This slide is similar to the slide for the general plants. It shows the, the green bars reflect the size of the plan. You can see that 4C is your largest safety plan. That's, that's a 3% at 55 plan. And that is your largest plan, because it's not just fire, it's also probation. And so those two departments combined are bigger than the sheriff department, which is Safety Plan 6B and Safety Plan 6A. It's worth noting that all three plants are half-rate plants. 6B, however, is a better benefit than 4C. 6B is 3% at 50, 4C is 3% at 55. And then you can see, same thing in PAPRA, employees make higher contribution rates. And then Safety Plan 4B, which is a closed older management plan for fire and probation, those employees are also paying higher rates with the remainder of the plans being half-rate plans. And similar to what we saw in the general plans, if you look at the age distribution of the safety plans, you can also see substantially an older workforce in many of the legacy plants. And for safety, because they tend to retire sooner, you want to also include those people on the 40 to 50 category as getting pretty close to retirement as well. So it's not just the blue boxes, it's also this light green box as well. But we expect to see significant retirements in, in all of those plants just due to the county's, the age of the county's workforce. So that concludes the presentation, and I'd be pleased to answer any questions.
Supervisor Labanino.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you very much, Mr. Levin. That was, I mean, you spelled out a very complicated, detailed financial situation down to the level where I can understand it. And believe me, we are sure, all of us getting questions from our constituents, as well as our employees, of why we're in this predicament. So I really appreciate the tutorial. So I guess I'll just touch on what we just got done talking about, which is the safety employees. And I understand why, you know, obviously, I think when you look back at that, the 3% at 50 was, anytime you look after that, we've just had loss after loss after loss. And the question is, do all safety members, regardless if they're doing a safety duty, they're all in the same, they all get a safety benefit? Is that correct?
If they are in the safety plan, yes.
So is there any way, or is there any talk about, you know, we have plenty of jobs that are in, either in the sheriff's department or the fire department that are not safety-related. Do we know how many employees are in those? Or is that an ability to have people have different plans inside a organized, inside a bargaining unit?
So you are actually, in your current safety plan, you have general, safety bargaining unit. You, for example, the sheriff's dispatchers are actually general members. They're represented by the Deputy Sheriff's Association, but they are actually participants in the county general plan. I would defer to the sheriff and also the county CEO on this, but my understanding of the county's policies has been that while sheriffs may occasionally work behind a desk, they need to be all be able to respond to the call for action when it's needed. And I think Daltopia is a great example of that. That just happened this weekend. And I think that, that's an all-hands type of environment where they're bringing people who do all sorts of different work within the sheriff's department out to the front lines in order to, to manage an event like that.
Okay. Makes sense. But, you know, I, I just think we need to take a really close look at jobs that are done inside those departments to make sure that whether they're IT or human resources, or whatever they are, that, you know, I, hey, anybody that's doing a safety job, I totally understand why somebody gets an increased benefit. It totally makes sense to me. But I just think that, you know, a little worried about how big those organizations are. And those, those plans are so much more expensive than our general plan. Just, you know, I'm sure it's something you're looking at.
Supervisor Labanino through the chair. I don't believe we have many, I don't believe there's any, and I'll check with HR, non-safety personnel in those safety plans. So as, as sworn, so as Mr. Levin said, dispatchers who are in the sheriff's department, who are not considered sworn officers, they are not in one of our public safety plans, but we can check.
Okay. All right. So let's go to your slide number four, which is the average monthly benefit. And so are we calculating, so that's... So are we calculating, so that's the number of retirees?
Yes.
On the far right?
Uh huh.
Okay. So I was thinking about, okay, so that, you could have somebody that just has five years, that just got vested. So an average sometimes gets skewed pretty well. Do we have any median, or do we know what those numbers are? Or I guess a high, low, and averages, I think we probably have a lot of people.
Would a high safety benefit be?
No, 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 no. I'm talking about just the average monthly benefit there.
I think, I think you're asking for the median number, because sometimes the median can be more accurate than the average, because the average can be skewed by the low or the high.
I'm sure we have a lot of zeros.
To throw a statistical term at mean pool, you're talking about.
Yes, sounds good to me, yeah.
Yeah. You would definitely see that distribution, the tail would be, of the mean would be on the left or the low side of the pension benefits, and that reflects the fact that someone who retired in 1980, who we still have members that have been retired for that long, probably only has a pension benefit of $700, $800, $900 a month. We have many, many members that are in that, in that ballpark. So yes, that mean is actually probably a high relative to the median, if you looked at the median.
Okay. And then on slide 10. So, you know, and we look at all of these things, and these are all great, and we say that, you know, we're going to pay it off, just like with the contribution projections on 15, and it's always if the assumptions are correct. But, you know, we keep having to lower our assumptions because they've never been, you know, they're always a little bit more, less conservative than it turns out to be. So what did, I don't know how to pronounce the name of the consultant. Is it Chiron or?
Chiron.
Chiron. Okay. So it looked like they recommended, when they looked at the 7%, that they said that they expected to be, returns to be below 7% for a number of years. Have they made any recommendation to us to lower that assumption rate? Or would they make that recommendation to us?
During this last experience study, they presented a range of options that, and in the actuarial lexicon, they use the term reasonable. This is, and reasonable doesn't sound like a good word, but in that, in that context, it is a good word. They recommended a range of reasonable options. And they actually, the recommendation to the Board of Retirement was, through this experience study, it would be reasonable to do nothing. But they also recommended to the Board of Retirement that it would be reasonable to lower all the way to 6.75%. I think that's a recognition of the fact that there's a range of acceptable outcomes, and that it's as much about timing as anything and where you want to be on that curve. But I think that if you look at what the tenure forward investment expectation from investment consultants is, that is actually lower. So the median recommendation from investment consultants, well, from our investment consultant, was 6.4% over the next 10 years was what the expectation was. I think if you broaden that universe and you look at more investment consultants, you can get that, that median expectation up to 6.75%, 7% in that neighborhood, but certainly lower than where we are today.
Well, that scares me, because, you know, three or four, five years from now, after we've gotten to seven, and we, you know, think that we've topped out, and we're looking out 10 or 12 years from then to pay off the unfunded liability, and then we're going to be talking about going down to 6, 7, 5, or 6 and 1/2. It would be interesting to run those numbers and see where you end up. And Peter, you've probably already done that.
Well, if I might break in, if you'd allow me to do that. I mean, if you go to page one of the Chiron Santa Barbara County entire employees retirement system actuarial experience study for June, sorry, July 1, 13 through June 30, 16, like the fourth paragraph in this thing says, quote, "The discount rate assumption is higher than the long-term 10-year capital market assumptions of 6.42% from RVK, the plan's investment consultant. However, we reviewed the capital market assumptions from three other investment consultants, and they all project slightly higher returns than RVK for the next 10 years." And yada, yada, 6.65 down the line. And, you know, so our guy, or Chiron's guy, says it's supposed to be 6.42. And then we went out and found some other guys that weren't our guys, and they said 6.65. So your point is really well taken.
Supervisor Williams?
Then, I mean, I guess the question is, why did the actuarial studies recommend 7.25?
I think it's important to understand context. We could have a discount rate of 7% and then earn 6.5%. So we fall short over a long period of time, say 20 years, if we have that pattern, where high discount rate, low, but lower than expected investment returns. And still, because of our amortization policy, wind up at a funding level of 85, 90%, which would be better than where we are today. And so when we look at these things, it's not an absolute science, and we recognize that these are estimates, and they are forward-looking projections. And, you know, put it in the context of if you asked those same investment consultants in 2005, two years before the Great Recession, what they thought they would earn over the next 10 years, that number probably looks something like 8%. And so you're operating on the best information you have available at the time, and I think the assumption-setting process and the discount rate-setting process recognizes that those assumptions are, you know, subjective error of their time, and that it's probably never as bad as people think it's going to be, and never as good as people think it's going to be. And so that's why you end up having a difference between the absolute investment return that a consultant may promise and where you land on your discount rate. The other aspect of this is in terms of a process, and in terms of, in the industry, we talk a lot about glide path. And there's nothing served to our members and our beneficiaries if we increase the county's contribution rates so high that the county refuses to pay those contribution rates. That's certainly not our goal. And so it's a long gradual process. I think the glide path certainly, right now, is pointing down to lower discount rates in the future. But I think that we have plenty of time to get there, and I think that we need to consider all of the information in total, rather than just specifically what the investment markets will yield, if that responds to the question.
Supervisor Lavignino.
Okay. May I add more than one question? I mean, I appreciate your sort of constructiveness and, but, I mean, you know, it's a little interesting that the recommendations are 7.25, and yet the decision was 7-oh, when what you're telling me, the downside is if we're off by a half-basis point, we're going to get to the same place, but it's going to take us a year or two longer to get to the same place. That really, that's what you're telling me, the downside of getting this wrong is. Right. I mean, you've illustrated the difference between normal and, and amort, and normal costs, which were shared, and the cost if we get it wrong, which we bear. So I get that, that the risk factor the county pays for, basically. But we're talking about cutting this organization by nearly $40 million, so because it was imperative to get there a year or two early to a higher rate of funding?
I don't think, I would put it in the context of a year or two early. And I think it's also important to remember that this is not a question of if the county pays, but when the county pays. And so this is a reflection of timing, and it's a policy decision in terms of how far can we, you know, comfortably smooth these costs out into the future. And I think the Board of, and I want to say that I think the Board of Retirement made a good decision. In the context of having an unfunded liability or funded ratio of 10%, it's not ideal. It's going to mean that the county is going to have higher contribution rates for longer, over a longer period of time. The comment with regard to being at 7% when the investment consultants are saying, you know, we think 6.5%, that comment, I think, should be evaluated more in the context of plan solvency than in terms of a perfect number, if that makes sense. And so what I'm saying is that we can be a little bit higher than what the investment consultant's recommendation is, and it is not a issue of plan solvency as much as it's an issue of, do you want the county's contribution rates in 2035 to be 22%? Or do you want them to be 30%? You've shown a capacity to pay rates, you know, in the high 30%. And so either way, you're going to be better off. But I think that it's a question of generational equity, and then it's also a question of risk, and in terms of what tools the Board of Retirement has in the future to lower the risk of the plan for protestants into the future. And so if we were to keep the discount rate abnormally high, that means that we'd have to reach for more return and take on more risk in the investment markets. If we lower the discount rate, that means that we can invest more conservatively and lower the risk to the county that one bad investment year is going to cause catastrophic budget impact for you in the future. So it's, it's an imprecise, you know, answer, and it, I think it really just illustrates the extent to which some of this is, you know, a lot of this is based on estimates and forward-looking projections, which change as the facts on the ground change.
I have a quick question, and then it'll be Supervisor Lavignino, Adam, and then Supervisor Wolf. We have another study in another three years. Is that the point where then we look at how accurate we've been and readjust? Supervisor Lavignino?
Okay, I got two left. And one is, so Greg, it says in here that 58% of the revenue is from investments.
Right.
And, you know, I've, you know, I'm always thinking about the retirement fund, so I look at the, all the indexes and the market. How reflective of that is what's happening to our pension fund? Because it's just baffling to me how all the indexes are at record highs, and yet we saw 0% or 1% return. So obviously, those two aren't married to each other.
So we have a concept of diversification in our plan, and that's consistent with most institutional investors. And so we're invested very broadly and internationally, and we are invested in a number of different asset classes. To give you an idea about, I think 30% of our exposure right now broadly is related to US investment equity market risk. But then we have a significant allocation to international markets and emerging markets, and then also significant allocation to private assets. But we, so we seek to diversify. And I often get the question of, well, my 401K did 10% last year. And I think that's also important to evaluate in the context of, at what stage of your life are you in, and how are you investing your 401K? Are you a 30-year-old that's taking mostly equity risk, and you have almost no bonds in your 401K plan? Or are you a 70-year-old that's relying on $50,000 of income a year so that you can pay your mortgage off of your 401K plan, and therefore you have 60% of your plan, your 401K plan invested in bonds? If you have that allocation of bonds, your investment return is probably going to look a lot lower than what you see when you look at CNN and you see that the Dow went up 10% last year. So from, from the perspective of the plan, we're a lot more like the 65-year-old than we are the 30-year-old. So we are a mature plan, about half of our members are retired. We have $140 million payroll that we need to hit every year, and we need to pay those benefits out. So we need to make sure that the plan has a sufficient amount of liquidity and money on hand so that we can make those benefit payments, similar to the 65-year-old that needs to take money out of the plan to pay their mortgage. So when you're evaluating it in that context, I think it makes a lot more sense, the conservatism and the diversification into areas that maybe don't pay as high of a return, but offer you a lot more downside protection and offer you a lot more inflation protection. And that's, that's reflective of what's in our asset allocation.
Okay. And then I think the last one is from Mr. Gazoni, and it's just, so with being a 37 Act county, and what are we required by law to do? You know, this is a question we get asked a lot, or I get asked, about, you know, what are our options? Basically, the Board of Retirement hands us this thing, and what are our options? And what are we allowed to do? And what are we required by law to do?
Supervisors, the starting point is that other counties have actually litigated the issue of, once you're in the 37 Act, is that a one-way trip? And the short answer is, once a county has elected to become a 37 Act county, the courts have concluded you are a 37 county, so there's no remaining opt-out. So you're inside the 37 Act framework. One of the, one of the areas in terms of options that we have been watching closely is the San Joaquin County case, which made clear that nothing in the, in PAPRA, the 2013 statute, limits the county's ability to eliminate or change what's referred to in the shorthand as COLA pickup, what percentage of cost-of-living adjustment funding the county actually pays. And that's something that, you know, Mr. Levin's charts were, you know, differentiating the COLA component versus the rest of the contribution. So that's a case that, the San Joaquin case had been at the Court of Appeal in 2016. There was a petition for review at the California Supreme Court. The San Joaquin County Correctional Officers Association that brought that petition withdrew the petition, and now it's not a live petition for further review at the California Supreme Court. So the case law in this area is that the county does have a live option of looking at what amount of COLA pickup is appropriate for the county to fund as the employer.
CEO Misato.
Supervisor through the chair. You asked an earlier question, Supervisor Lavignino. What is the amount of money for that employee portion of the COLA normal? And it's $7.3 million. And to put in context, that may not seem a lot, considering the size of our budget, but the increase that we're facing next year in our pension costs is about $9 million, and it has a significant impact on some of our departments that just don't have the revenue to cover that.
Was that, so it's 7.3 million that we are paying of the employee portion?
Correct.
Okay.
And Supervisor Lavignino, the other landscape that everyone is watching closely, although it's referred to as, as the Marin case, there's actually a series of five cases where the California Supreme Court has accepted a petition for review on a case that questions whether changes on benefits within a plan must always be offset by a comparable new benefit. So the Marin case has been accepted for review by the California Supreme Court, but that has been deferred until a series of cases that are referred to as the Alameda County cases make it through the Court of Appeal process. And those three cases are Alameda County, Contra Costa, and Merced, and then a, an additional case that's out there that is on a similar issue is Cal Fire Local 2881. And all of that boils down to that sometime in the next year to 18 months, I think the landscape will be clearer as to whether any benefits inside a plan must be offset by comparable new benefits to be changed. And I think that's a significant point as you're looking at options.
Does that do it, Supervisor Lavignino? Supervisor Adam?
Thank you. Well, I just want to kind of go back to that earlier discussion we were having and start at slide 10 on that June 30th, 2010, where Milliman recommended reduction to 7.25. And my question is, had they gone to 7.25 at that time, how would that have affected performance over time?
Well, clearly, 2014, when we earned 15%, would have been a bigger actuarial gain. And 2015 and 2016, when we underperformed the investment hurdle, would have been smaller actuarial losses. And during that time, so, but you would likely have about the same level of unfunded viability because that, that discount rate is impacting the cost, the estimate. because that, that discount rate is impacting the cost, the estimate of the actual liability. So it's increasing the value of the liability when it goes down. What you would have also seen through that period is higher county contributions through that whole period. And so you would have begun the process of amortizing that change sooner. And so you would be further through that amortization schedule. And perhaps, well, a great example is this discount rate change to 7 percent is going to be reflected through 19 years of amortization charges. If we had done that in 2010, we would have
Maybe seven years into it.
We'd have 11 years remaining on that.
Right. Okay, so that would have flattened that, that, the bad news curve?
Yes.
Okay. The other thing I wanted to do is return to that first page of the Chiron report and, just read one more sentence there. And, and this is back to the, the same paragraph where we get the, the RVK, which is Chiron's guy, telling us we need to be at 7.42. But then they go and find some other guys that want to be at 7.65. And, sorry, 6.65. If the current target asset allocation is maintained and these projects, projections are realized, the plan would experience a pattern of actuarial losses from the assets in the near term, and yada, yada. So this, this doesn't look good to me. I mean, and, and back to slide 10, you know, somebody told you in, or somebody, not you, but somebody told us in 2010, we should have been at 7.25. And it just seems like we're always shooting behind, and we never actually hit the target. And, you know, it, if we didn't hit the target, then, you know, at what point do you, do you go broke? And I realize you're sitting here with a bunch of slides that I, I think are, are a little bit lipstick, well, maybe a lot of lipstick on the pig. Because I, I think that this thing is already over center, and I think that it's, it's going to be very difficult, especially given one more rate, rate adjustment, for us to run the county, you know, at the same time as we pay, you know, the, the payments. And, you know, it's like, nobody wants to say it, and frankly, I don't either. But, you know, this is unsustainable. And we're going to find out over the next five years as these, these payments creep up. And they're not really creeping, they're kind of leaping. And, and we're going to be able to provide less and less services and have less and less employees. And, you know, you can't, you can't cut your way out of this problem.
So I'm glad you asked that question, brought up that page in the experience study, because I, after I get the answer to the previous point, there was one thing I didn't mention, and I'm glad that I have an opportunity to mention. So that 6.42 investment return expectation from the investment consultant, it's, it's really important to note that that's predicated on a, I think, a 2-point, a 2 percent inflation assumption. And so if we go back to this slide, if I were to have a 2 percent inflation assumption and a four, and a quarter percent real return assumption, I would be at a 6.25 percent discount rate. And so
See, that, that really bothers me, though, because, and you and I were talking about this before the meeting. I don't know why we, yeah.
There's a timing issue with the PowerPoint slides, I apologize.
The problem with inflation and calculating inflation as a portion of the real, or the returns, the investment returns, is that it's always being offset by whatever inflation there is in the real world in, in people's spending. So, you know, we owe them a certain amount of, of inflation in terms of a COLA. And then we're going to figure that the same thing is happening as a part of the, the return. And I just, that, that seems like it's kind of worthy of Enron to me. I'm sorry, I just can't wrap my mind around utilizing, you know, general inflation as a portion of return. You know, in my world, I got to go invest money, and then whatever that makes, that's the return on investment.
Uh-huh.
I don't have inflation as a portion of, I just, I'm going to be alive next year, so I'm going to get 2 percent.
Well, I, I think that there's a lot of schools of thought on how to develop a discount rate and how to project investment return. I, I think that real estate offers a really good example of, you know, how inflation works. So we have a $220 million plus real estate portfolio at SB Service. And we get two types of return from that real estate portfolio. We get appreciation. And real estate is very, it's very sensitive, actually, to inflation. And so we tend to get some asset growth from our real estate portfolio because of inflation. But we also get yield off of that real estate portfolio, and that yield comes in terms of rents and lease revenue. And so that, that lease revenue and that yield sort of reflects that real return component. And, and so real estate is a good kind of example for showing you how both we get inflation because we get that throughout asset growth, and then we also get a kind of a real return on top of that. But I appreciate the point.
Well, yeah, but see, here's the difference, though, is you've got a willing buyer, and you're, you're the willing seller, and you've got an arms-length transaction inside a lease.
Right.
And so they've accepted you're larding in the 2 or 3 percent inflation figure into the payments of the lease.
Right.
Well, you're, that's not really what's going on here. Because you're out there owning stocks and bonds and stuff, and there's no, there's no inflation larded into the lease in that thing. That, that, you either are getting dividends, which is defined and limited, or you're getting appreciation, which is undefined and unlimited, either side.
Well, I mean, we're going down the rabbit hole here, but
Well, hey, here we live right here.
A, a lot of how stocks are valued is based off of revenue growth, and you're looking at corporate earnings. And corporate earnings, and that is in terms of the most standard valuation model for equities, are based on corporate revenues. And when you have an inflationary environment, you expect over time that corporate revenues will increase. And so thus, you get to the price-to-earnings ratio, and when the earnings component is increasing, that generally pulls the price up of an equity. So I, I, I mean, there's a lot of fundamental concepts, and I, and I appreciate where you're coming from. I think the challenge that, if there is a challenge in this scenario, has been where you have, you know, long sustained 2 percent inflation, and broadly, and that's what you're getting on the financial markets, but then hyperlocally, because of the cost of healthcare and the cost of housing in Santa Barbara, you're seeing inflationary pressures on your wage growth that are in excess of the inflation that you're going to get from the financial markets. And I think that that's part of that story as well. Because that inflation numbers doesn't really reflect, I think, what drives your personnel costs. What's driving your personnel costs right now, I think, is the cost of housing and the cost of healthcare in Santa Barbara County. And that's, but that's an opinion, so I want, I want to say that.
I know, but that just, you know, that statement right there just makes it extra super dubious to have it calculated in as a, as a component of, of the return, to me. I mean, it's, it's sort of, it's local, it's to some extent a local issue. We know that there's inflation out there, and maybe that's the best, like you and I were discussing earlier, it is what it is. And so it's the best indicator of, of how fast the payments are going to go up. And so we have to use it because it's the best thing we have as a barometer. But that doesn't mean that you're going to get return based on, on, on that. Anyway, you know, there's, there's a lot of uncertainty here, and that's my point, is if you're going to run it for the benefit, and I realize you have a, a different hat than we do up here. We're trying to run the county, and there's one of us who changed hat, changes hats and goes over and sits on your board, and, and you have to run your fund for the benefit of the employees, and I, and I get that. And you're fiduciary obligation, and so does Supervisor Wolf, when she goes over there and sits on your board. But the, the level of uncertainty at this point that this causes, you know, this is, this isn't your, your father's uncertainty here. This is, you know, 20 years ago, this thing was a minor part of the budget of the county. And now it's, it's swallowing us. So the, you know, just as, as, so the public's aware, this is, this is going to cost us so much money that we're not going to be able to provide the level of services over the next decade that, that they've come to expect. So anyway, just to leave that, you, you made a comment earlier regarding intergenerational equity, and I want you to tell me what you meant by that.
Certainly. The, the longer we stretch the amortization of unfunded liabilities out, the, the longer it's going to take to pay off that liability. And so one of the, from a policy perspective, one of the things that you want to think about is, in terms of goals and concepts, is whether or not, when someone retires, you've paid the pension benefit that is due to them. And so when you look at intergenerational equity, you start looking at issues like, well, if we're short on funding this person's retirement, and they're gonna, they're gonna take, it's going to take us 20 years to pay that, and that person's going to retire tomorrow, well, that means it's the next generation of taxpayers that are going to pay for this person's retirement. And so you want to have some level of matching where the people are paying for the services when they're incurred and not paying for yesterday's services. So there's no correct and perfect right answer on that, but that is a policy concept that you want to be aware of when you're establishing assumptions for pension plans.
Okay. Thank you.
Supervisor Wolf?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just a, just a couple things. I just wanted to talk about Mr. Adams was mentioning page one and RVK. And I think you mentioned that RVK is part of the actuary, you kind of alluded, Chiron, yep. But actually, the Board of Retirement has hired RVK. So there are our folks, there are management consultants. So they're very separate from the actuary. The actuary just included that information in their actuary, in their report here. So I just, just wanted to clarify that. You know, I have a lot to say, but I'm just going to try and keep it brief. The, the actuary provided the Board of Retirement four different options when we were looking at our assumption changes. And I have the, the sheet from them. And it says, contribution impact of recommended assumption changes. So all four of these were, you might say, recommended. There wasn't one particular, one of these that they recommended. In fact, in their report, they gave us numerous reasons why we might choose one of these. It seemed very apparent to me, as we were going through this discussion, that the discount rate of 7.25 was the most appropriate one for the Board of Retirement to take. And there were, and there were reasonable reasons why I voted for that. Now, other retirement members felt differently, and I know that they had reasonable reasons to vote for that. But I think it's important that we understand and we know that all of these were reasonable. One important point for me was that the, if we had gone with a 7.25, the contribution rate increase to the Board of Superv, to the county would have been 4.39. With the assumption rate of 7 percent, which is what the Board adopted, our contribution rate almost doubled to 8.46. So, so that's, that's a big difference. That's a big hit to the county. And so when people, if people talk about the impact, as Supervisor Adam mentioned, level of service, I think that that is important. But I also think it's important to note that there was an alternative that could have been taken, that would have been actuarially sound, but wouldn't have had the level of impact directly to the county. So in my final comment, the fact of the matter is, is that the Board of Retirement made a decision. We spend a lot of time, we spent a lot of time on, on that decision. We also spend a lot of time working with RVK in asset allocation. We, we, we measure the asset allocation and compare it to risk. We could have a total risk-free retirement system, but then that might impact the amount of return. And I thank you, Supervisor Lavenino, for bringing up what you did. I think that's an issue that we talk a lot about at the Retirement Board, obviously, because we want to see our returns greater than, than they are. So I guess just in closing, I feel like we're going, we're going to get through this. I think in, it was last year, or maybe it was two years ago, when our CEO had expected and anticipated that we were going to see a change in the, in retirement. I think that many of us thought it might be reduced to 7.25, and there were some adjustments made looking at that. So now we have a larger challenge, and, you know, we will, we will, we will move forward. We are, we are acting conservatively, as we could see from the chart from other 37 Act counties. But what I see as an unfortunate state of affairs is that the impact to the county is greater than it may have needed to be. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. And seeing no more lights, we will go to public comment.
Chair, members of the Board, we have one request to speak, Mr. Caldwell.
Chairman, members of the Board, I'm Andy Caldwell, representing COLAB. Whereas I think this is one of the best presentation Retirement Boards ever made, we still have our serious objection. And that is, is if, you know, they showed the, that page with projections over time, how many of you are betting that in the next 13 years, the stock market's not going to have a serious correction or a crash? So this, this is not worth the paper it's written on. Because we know that within 13 years, we're going to have a correction or a crash. And you never planned for it. You've never planned for it. And, you know, this goes back when Mike Brown was CEO, we were given the same speech. You can't expect it to always stay the same or only keep going up. So why don't we get real and be truthful and transparent? And let's just say in 2022, we're going to have a big, huge market crash or crash, because that's probably about when it's going to be due. If history is any indicator. Then what? Then what is your plan? And we're telling you, you need to plan for that, not plan for this. Planning for this has got us into a big, huge hole that's worth of a billion dollars. The other thing I want to just mention real quickly is I was really happy that they talked about Social Security and SEIU. That never gets mentioned. But what we still have never seen is for you to plug the numbers in. How much is the SEIU retirement plus Social Security cost compared to public safety? We'd like to see the number. The other thing I want to remind you is DSA gave up raises to help pay for the 3 percent at 50. But the county didn't set that money aside and keep building that to help pay for their retirement. Finally, there's two things you can do, and we keep bringing this up. County Council tells you what the law is. Well, how can the law be changed? Every county and every city in the state is going through the same thing. Why can't the law be changed? Why won't you put that in your ledge platform? Why won't you put that in your ledge platform? Why doesn't CSAC have it in there? Change the California law. Then finally, the last thing that you have power to do is privatize. The public defender in Slow is privatized. What does that do? How many things could you, Public Works, part of it could be privatized easily. You have tons of construction companies out there.
Thank you.
You have options, and you never debate those.
So, bring it back to the Board. Is there any more discussion, or may I have a motion to receive and file the report?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'll move that we receive and file this report.
I'll second with, I would also like to see that, because that's one of the things I was talking about, is that chart that talks about-
Social Security.
-Social Security, what those numbers actually are. So, show how close, show how close our general members are to our public safety members with actual dollars instead of, okay? But that's a second.
Thank you. I think we can just, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? The report is received and filed. I'd like to take a 10-minute break, and then we'll come back and take item number two. April 11, 2017, meeting in the Santa Barbara County Board of Supervisors in our Santa Maria hearing room. And we're on to departmental agenda, item number two. Mr. Allen, would you read that into the record, please?
Chair Hartman and members of the Board, item number two is from the County Executive Office. It's a hearing to consider recommendations during a resolution approving the Santa Barbara County's drought relief projects submittal to the Governor's Drought Task Force.
Mr. Redd.
Chairman, honorable Board members, over the last four months, there's been a strong regional effort in this county to develop a proposal of viable projects this county regionally, and hopefully with the state's support, could undertake to improve our regional water situation for this drought and for future droughts. All right? Mr. Redd.
I'm sorry, okay. You start over, or we're good? Okay. We'll begin again, then. Chair and honorable Board members, over the last four months, there's been a strong regional effort in this county to develop a proposal of viable projects this county regionally can undertake, hopefully with state's support, to improve our regional water situation for this drought and for future droughts. During this staff report, Tom Fayram and I will go through the process that arrived at this proposal and provide staff recommendations for you. The drought was proclaimed in January 2014 by the Board, excuse me, by both the Governor and your Board. We are now in our sixth year of drought. While the drought has eased in this county, we are still at a moderate, quote, drought, and our reservoirs are still relatively low. The cycle of drought in this county comes more often, with the last three drought periods occurring once each decade, this drought being the most severe. Because of the situation we were in in early winter, on December 12, 2016, the Governor's Drought Task Force convened a meeting in Santa Barbara County at the Emergency Operations Center. Their purpose was to bring together regional stakeholders with the objective of identifying and developing a list of regional priority projects that both address immediate drought emergencies and long-term water supply sustainability. The first meeting of the Drought Action Work Group developed objectives to give the, to move the process along. These objectives were agreed to by all the agencies and jurisdictions who participated, which essentially was all the major water agencies in the county. Of concern when we started was that we were in an extremely vulnerable position, where our only water source for many areas was the state water project spilling into Lake Kachuma. The water, which is entirely delivered by a mechanical system, could by its nature fail. If it did, we would have been in a water crisis. Thus, there was a need for short-term objectives. Further, we were concerned about getting through next summer and fall with limited water, thus the medium-term objectives. And you can see on the screen the objectives, and then, for the sake of time, I'm gonna move past that. With the cycle of drought more prevalent, and with the impacts of climate change, we need to recognize that we need to move, we need to have more alternatives to pull us through dry periods. And you can see the long-term objectives that were identified as well to achieve those We had an aggressive timeline for projects this big, and involved many agencies working together. And you can imagine, we had to put aside many differences for all the water agencies to come together. In your board package and the proposal is this list of projects. And what we'd like to do now is have Mr. Fayram work through those projects with you. They were divided up into two categories, one being additional water supplies, and the other being protection of existing water supplies.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the Board. So, this project list actually, as Mr. Lewin mentioned, all of the water purveyors in the county, or many of them, came together and helped develop this list. And in terms of additional water supply, which is actually creating new water, there are three items that are on this list. One is the reacquisition of suspended Table A water, which has been to your Board at various times over the last couple of years, and will be coming back to your Board in its various forms as we progress through that. Also recommissioning of the desalinization plant in Santa Barbara. That project, while currently under construction and expected to deliver water in May, is currently only being recommissioned to about a third of its permitted capacity. It's just over 3,000 acre-feet, and it has the potential to deliver 10,000 acre-feet, and of course, to deliver up to the 10,000 acre-foot level, that would require, you know, additional funding. And then, there's also a look by both Carpinteria and Galita Water Districts to look at a reuse water, a reuse of their wastewater for either recharging their groundwater or other nonpotable And the other list for protecting existing supplies, we have the Chrome 6 issue in the San Andres Valley, which, while San Andres ID-1 has a large groundwater supply available to it, some of that water is not available under the new state regulations due to the high levels of Chrome 6. And so, therefore, one of the options to solidify existing resources would be to help remove Chrome 6, which requires some expensive treatment options. The second one, you know, due to the drought, we did have a emergency pumping system on Lake Kachuma to ensure delivery of water from Lake Kachuma, much of that being state water project inflow would be continued to flow to Lake Kachuma. We are hopeful and working with the water purveyors to ensure that we can do everything we can to try to head off the cost of doing that in the future. I think, as Mr. Lewin mentioned, that there are two bad things with getting that temporary emergency pump, emergency pump system at Lake Kachuma. One, it means your Kachuma water is near or almost gone, then leaving you relying on state water, which is not desirable. And then, lastly, construct an inner tie between Galita Water District and the City of Santa Barbara to ensure an exchange if there's a need for that. So, those are the projects that, again, these purveyors have come together and supported.
All the large water agencies that participated in the process adopted resolutions in support of the proposal being sent to the State Drought Task Force. The resolutions are part of your board package. In addition, the City of Carpinteria, which is not a water agency, also resolved their support. No agencies rejected the proposal. And further, in your board package is a letter from the Chamber of Commerce of Galita, also in support of it. So, with that, staff recommends that you adopt the resolution, that you direct staff to send the proposal and resolution to the Governor's Drought Task Force, and copy the state senator and our two Assembly members, and that you determine that this project was exempt from CEQA. And of course, all of us are available for questions.
Supervisor Lavenino.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Would either of you be able to discuss, if we're talking about, you know, talking about emergency drought relief and those types of things, the, address anything that's being done to deal with the diversion of water for the fish in that area? And is anything being done between the county and the Governor's Office, talking about maybe within drastic drought measures, that that's either curtailed or eliminated? I think it's been done in the past, but where's that going and what's happening with that?
Madam Chair, Supervisor Lavenino, I think I can at least let you know what I'm aware of in terms of that. As you may recall, we talked about the diversions for fish at this, at this board in a previous meeting. Since the lake was at its lowest elevations, releases for fish were, in fact, were eliminated, except for pumping out of the stealing basin, which is below the dam, does not come out of the lake. But with the lake rebounding to about 50% capacity, I am, I am of the understanding that the National Marine Fisheries Service has compelled the Bureau of Reclamation to, again, restart the fishery releases, and they're currently targeting about eight acre-feet a day for that. The point at which, when the lake gets down to such a level where they would curtail that again, I don't, I don't know where that level will be. But certainly, in the, in the near term, those releases have and will, will be continuing.
Okay. So, one thing I learned on our most recent trip to Washington was that the county's actually paid for the building of the dam. We've paid back the Bureau of Reclamation, correct?
Yeah. Madam Chair, Supervisor Lavenino, as a water service contract with the water agency as the contractor, but the water purveyors, the five water purveyors, San Andres ID-1, Galita, Santa Barbara, Montecito, Carpinteria, those water ratepayers have paid the capital costs of the Kachuma project in full. That was paid off in 2015.
So, they've paid the capital costs. So, I'm trying to figure out, so where do they come into, if they own it, where is their decision-making ability? It seems like Bureau of Reclamation still makes all the calls, but we own the facility.
So, Madam Chair, Supervisor Lavenino, a fine point here. While on a federal water supply project, the capital costs were paid off, the ownership and operation of the dam itself is still through the Bureau of Reclamation? and operation of the dam itself is still through the Bureau of Reclamation? And owning a dam is a rather high liability proposal, and so certainly having the Bureau continue to own and operate the dam, you know, has that upside. As a consequence, between federal agencies, the operation of that still falls, falls under the Endangered Species Act, and hence the coordination is between the Bureau and National Marine Fisheries Service at the federal level, and that's where those discussions and decisions are made.
So who, who actually owns the water behind the dam?
The Bureau owns the, they hold the water rights for the project. The Bureau does own the water rights.
Just one last thing. Is this a good time to talk about any other bad news that you might have heard of when you were in Washington DC, Mr. Fayram? Or we want to wait on that?
Madam Chair, Supervisor Labanino, what the supervisor's referring to is a pending new biological opinion from National Marine Fisheries, of which I have not seen at this point, so I'd best reserve that until we actually see it.
It's worse.
Supervisor Williams?
Well, I had some other comments. I would only chime in that I think it helps with the heavy hand of nymphs to try to be proactive for local agencies, you know? Trading away water is harder and is, I think, more problematic for us than to offer as part of a BO, a biological opinion, additional passage, refugia, and habitat projects, which with landowner buy-in can, can prevent us losing water. You know, the, the agencies collectively have been, did a pretty good job of that in the last BO. The most conspicuous project, of course, is, was the raising of the dam to mitigate the additional water release. But the others that we don't hear much about is, you know, a half dozen important fish passage and capital projects and refugia, because you can arguably restore the fish numbers better by creating, you know, trees along the river, you know, things that we would perceive as swimming holes but are just deeper areas where, where fish won't die because the river gets too hot. And it's probably a lot better for us to be doing than investing that same money in lawyers to litigate, or for that matter, it's a lot better than losing water. So my, you know, I, I think that I'm, I don't know, I'm kind of toying with whether or not to, to support this today, or because I do see some flaws. I see, number one, flaws in some actions that agencies are taking in the recent weeks of scaling back drought restrictions when we're still in drought. And I can tell you, since this, the purpose of this is to send to our legislators so that they can try to get more money out of the governor, the biggest thing that the governor's staff asks for is what restrictions are in place, right? And the best argument we can get to get more money for these is that these restrictions are still in place because we're still in emergency. And so while these agencies are telling us, you know, telling their legislator, "Go get more money," they're basically undermining the argument that we would use to go get more money. And that's dumb. Two, I do think that there's some unanswered questions in the Table A thing. I'm not saying that we should be opposed, but that's coming back to us, so I don't have to die on that hill today, right? Because some of the agencies don't intend to use this as a drought buffer but intend to sell it. So that's not really drought planning, in my, in my view, right? Getting more water so that they can sell it is not drought planning. In fact, it could make us more vulnerable to drought if they sold it to private developers and they used that to develop a project that is then means we, we need to find more water in the future for the county because there's this project. So I, I want us to make sure that this is in our long-term interest of protecting us from drought, not exacerbating a drought that could happen in the future. Particularly if some of that Table A allocation was used to sell to a development on the Gaviota Coast that we wouldn't normally, as a county, approve. So if we're supporting this, and this is used to frustrate the county's own land use policies, that seems really kind of dysfunctional. So I, I think that when the Table A allocation comes back, I would definitely need to see some guarantees from those agencies about where the, the destination of that water would be, because I, I know they're not all planning on using it as a drought buffer, and I also don't think we should represent it to the governor's office as a drought buffer if it's not a drought buffer. That also would undermine our argument to get money for, for it. The thing that I think there needs to be a lot more money if it goes forward is, is for the energy impact of the D-SAL facility. I really think it's a dumb move to build this D-SAL facility without an energy source for the D-SAL facility, because the future costs per acre-feet are going to be so high that I don't, I don't think I need to be a prophet or a soothsayer, or be able to see the future, to, to say that it's likely that future ratepayers are going to go, "Why would we continue to buy this water when we can buy water that costs hundred-does of dollars per acre-feet, and this water costs thousands of dollars per acre-feet?" And that isn't obviated unless you, you front-load the capital costs and create an energy source for the D-SAL facility, because the, the lion's share of the, the cost of the D-SAL facility is in energy. And so if, if the city and Montecito Water District don't want what has happened to the, in the past, to happen again, which is, we pay for a D-SAL facility and then future people decommission the D-SAL facility, then they, then we got to suck it up and, and build, you know, enough solar to power the D-SAL facility. And, and that would be something that I can tell you as, as a former legislator, that'd be an easy, that'd be a great project to sell to the administration, right? But it requires courage on all of our parts. So I don't know whether I want to vote for this or not, but I, I think that there's, that these are all, that there are some great projects in this, including the Galita and Carpinteria reuse projects that are, I think are just cutting-edge, vital to our future. But there are some flaws in this as well, so I don't know what I'm going to do.
I don't see any other lights, so I'd like to say a few things. First of all, I would like to commend you, Mr. Lewin, for all the hard work you did in this process. It's unprecedented to get all the water purveyors to sit down, meeting after meeting, to keep coming back. It was, I think, your leadership and a stroke of genius to put it under the emergency rather than under some other water agency. And I, I hope that this is a first effort towards a more regional, coordinated approach to managing our water resources. I think the list of projects that we see are projects that people had sitting on the shelf in different organizations and brought them out and tried to establish some set of priorities. And these are something, these are projects that can deal, that can be, that have been in the works for a while. But I think the, the next phase is what we do to create greater sustainability locally. And I'm particularly interested in how we might follow up on this process and keep the people working together so that we can figure out how not to rely so much on state water and ideally not so much on very expensive D-SAL water. So I do have a couple of questions, and I guess the first is, how, how do you envision the process with this set of projects moving forward? As I remember, boards from the different agencies were going to approve this set, and then what happens?
So with your direction, of course, thank you, Chair and Supervisors, with your direction, we will take the proposal and send it to the Governor's Drought Task Force, along with sending it to the state senator, who was quite emphatic at the first meeting, that we come together regionally, that the issue that has been going on locally is that the water agencies have been working hard on managing the drought, but they weren't working regionally on the drought. And that by providing a list of projects, the state senator and the assembly members would be able to look at existing programs such as Prop 1 money that may be available for distribution, but of course, those are competitive processes with other areas of the state. And that they could hopefully provide some assistance. I've gotten reassurances from the State Office of Emergency Services even this week that they want to continue to support us in this endeavor, and of course, they have, they are on the state drought task force. With that, they've asked us to convene a meeting on April 25th at the Emergency Operations Center, where the Director of OES will be coming again to meet with the entire membership of the Action Working Group. So of course, if we send this to the state and to the state senator and assembly members, it is of course hoped by all the water agencies that something could occur to assist the region in providing water. I, I just wanted to add one thought here is that, as we all know, the climate is changing and the, it really is not an issue of getting additional water for growth as it is as much an issue of being able to sustain what we need to do. Our drought was very severe. We were on the knife's edge this year in, in the fact that if the state water had failed, we would have been in a water crisis that would have required severe sorts of emergency responses to that, potentially water distribution, potentially water rationing so severe that we would have had to resort to using non-water hygiene methods, being able to make sure that we would have fire protection water. That could have happened if we'd had a failure. We have a little bit of relief now with the recent rains, but still, we're, we're still in a moderate drought, drought, and we still have issues. So, you know, water obviously is very expensive, and, and we want to have as much of a portfolio of water sources as we can to be able to withstand emergencies that we were in and may continue to be in if we don't see wet years in the next couple. I don't know if there's anything of that, but thank you, Supervisor.
Would you follow up on Supervisor, Supervisor Williams' comment about removing drought restrictions and your understanding of where we are in that and how that affects us going in for this funding?
Yeah, so of course, that, that is a topic that comes up very frequently with the water agencies, is why aren't we doing the similar kinds of rationing that was done in the early 90s during that water crisis? And the response often from the water agencies is, we've exceeded all of those water demands that were in place in the 90s through conservation methods that were voluntary, and that the amount of water, and not all the water agencies were as successful as some, but many of them were far exceeding the governor's water rationing targets, far exceeding them, and we're doing a very good job of, of reducing water. And as we all know, when people do reduce the amount of water, the revenues that come into those agencies is greatly reduced, causing impacts both on the ratepayers and the water agency's ability. So it's, it's way more complicated than this emergency manager can understand, but I could certainly see in the meetings that the water agency managers struggle hard with that whole issue.
I would just like to add before Supervisor Williams, perhaps we need to look at our pricing of water so that we're paying more in capital and, and we're not caught in this where if people reduce their use of water, that we don't have the funds to pay for the capital and administration. I think that, I think there's, there is a study on this, and I hope you would, or somebody would bring this to our water purveyors to consider in a workshop. Supervisor Williams?
Oh Supervisor, I'm sorry. Mr. Fayram, you see it around Mr. Allen's head.
Yes, Madam Chair, and with input from your office too, we do hold a quarterly Water Purveyors Association meeting, and that topic of water pricing is going to be coming up on a, on a future meeting, so we will be convening that discussion. And I will also add that I think some of the purveyors are also looking at building in a drought buffer component to their pricing, you know, in times when, when they do have ample water supplies, so that when it does, when their sales go down, then they have a reserve fund to work off of. So there's probably a combination of those need to happen to avoid this issue.
Supervisor Williams?
Well, I would just caution you about repeating statements that water agencies make that may or may not be true. I'll give you an example. No water agency can conclusively say that they've met or exceeded the, the targets of the governor if they are permitting, if another jurisdiction like the county is continually permitting wells in that jurisdiction. So on paper, Montecito Water District looks like, "Oh, man, we, we can serve the ton of money," until you look at how many wells were drilled during that same time that are un-metered and under-recorded. So, you know, some agencies, like the City of Santa Barbara, their water savings is real and really commendable. They have one of the lowest per capita water use anywhere. But some of the water conservation is illusionary, like in Montecito Water District, where we don't actually know how much water has been saved or not. We don't know if any water has been saved because we don't know how much water is being pumped out by private wells. And so to just sort of dispense with restrictions in the middle, when we're, on one hand, with our constituents dispensing with restrictions, and on the other hand, asking, saying to the governor, "We're still in a state of emergency," it doesn't take that smart of staff of the governors to go, "Wait a minute, what's really going on here?" And I would say that we need to get our stories straight. Is our goal to do a drought buffer? If yes, then let's do the drought buffer, and let's keep on conserving water. Or is the goal to make up fiscally for some of the costs that we've incurred during the drought, which is why we would be trying to acquire more water to sell? And that's two different stories that are incongruent with each other. We need to have one story. And, and, and so I, I think that would be something that we need to understand before, I hope, before this board is ready to approve the, for instance, the Table A allocation.
Supervisor Labanino.
Madam Chair, so where are you worried that it's going to get sold? Because it has to stay inside the county. I mean, I know we're getting on to another subject here, but...
Well, you know, one agency, I think, is planning on selling it out of the county, but maybe if, I don't, I don't know the issue up here in the north, but the, another agency in, in my neck of the woods, we don't know where they want to sell it, but we do know they don't have conveyance for it. So if they don't have conveyance for it, that doesn't mean that, that they're going to use it for themselves, right?
But I might be mistaken. I thought inside the Table A agreement was that the, the, the water had to stay inside the county. I mean, it might go from one agency to another inside the county, but it has to go inside the county first.
Chair Supervisors, your board did approve a term sheet with Central Coast Water Authority, and in that term sheet is a provision entitled "Use of Water," and it requires that any water received as a result of this additional Table A water is for use within Santa Barbara County by the participants or is exchanged with other CCWA members within Santa Barbara County. In addition, this water may be used as payment for prior water exchanges or for use by other CCWA members within the district.
Okay, so it might, it might go between agencies within the district, but from, from that standpoint, I mean, I still look at it as a drought buffer. Any other water... Any other water, I guess I just look at it different. Any additional water that you can get your hands on at some point is a drought buffer. And I understand what you're saying is if you're not conserving, it's really not a drought buffer, you're using it as a fiscal tool.
Right. And I would just say that the, where this could get really sideways is if an agency uses it to sell to a developer in an area, for instance, like the Gaviota Coast, where our land use policies are not that friendly to development and where there's no public benefit to providing water to have more mansions on the Gaviota Coast that then mean that we are more vulnerable to the next drought because they're going to still need the water during the next drought. And so I think the county needs some protections that we are not undermining our land use policies by going forward with this. I'm not saying we shouldn't go forward, but I'm, I want to know what the water's going to be used for beforehand if it's not really for a drought buffer.
Well, I think if your number one worry is we're going to build mansions on the Gaviota Coast, I can guarantee you this part here is probably a pretty good backstop for you.
Supervisor Adam?
Well, look, I'm okay with running the South Coast out of water. If that's what you want to do, that's okay. I'm fine because in my district, we have plenty of water and we're going to be okay. You know, if that's the way you want to run it, you know, I'm not going to run your district for you. But if you don't have enough water for people to have adequate, I mean, you're talking about having waterless hygiene, that means a waterless bath, which isn't, pardon me?
Oh, no.
So, you know, that's not something I like, you know? I like my 20-minute shower. So, you know, I'm, you know, I'm all over that and everybody in my district is too. So, you know, I think you better stop trying to control development with water and figure out how to get adequate supply here for the people who are here because you don't really have that right now. But, you know, if that's not the way they want to run it on the South Coast, that's okay.
Supervisor Wolf and then Supervisor Williams?
Thank you, Madam Chair. You know, I just, just for agenda management, I know we have people here that want to speak to the next item. So I just, I have a comment to make on this, but I wanted to know, we have one public speaker? Okay, and then my question is, will we be hearing the next item?
Let me ask my colleagues, are you willing to keep going?
I think that we can wrap it up.
Okay. So we'll hear Galita Beach after this?
Right.
Before lunch? Okay, good. All right, so I'll just wait for my comments after public speaker.
Okay, Supervisor Williams and then we'll go to public comment.
I want a drought buffer for people who are here. I don't want to provide water for future McMansions on the Gaviota Coast and I don't think the, that just doesn't make sense and it's definitely, that's definitely not a drought buffer. So I'm not gonna, I'm going to support this today, but before we make discretionary decisions on the Table A allocations, there's actually two Table As, I want to know what both of those are going to be used for. I think that's a reasonable question to ask if we're supposed to make a, to facilitate.
And I'm with you Supervisor Williams on that one. Let's go to public comment.
Mr. Caldwell?
Madam Chair, members of the board, I'm Andy Caldwell, representing COLAB. It's really hard for us to understand why the county's not fighting tooth and nail against the fish releases. I grew up in Lompoc and if, and I would love to tell you the story, but I'm not going to waste my three minutes on it, but like I said, I could tell you a lot of history about trout runs, the stillhead trout runs through the San Inas River. The bottom line is when Congress authorized that dam, they signed the death certificate to those stillhead trout runs and they knew it. So why the federal government's coming back now and demanding water releases for a dam we paid for, I don't understand and I don't understand why you're not fighting it because all what you've done is created basically an aquarium with a sandy bottom. The water, you're not, you're barely keeping the fish alive and you're only keeping them alive if and when a run can be facilitated to the ocean and back, which hasn't happened in a long, long time. It's a complete waste of time, energy, money, and water. We don't understand why if our county is still in drought, which we are, we're one of the only areas in California still in drought, why did you ask for emergency legislation on the fish releases? And/or emergency legislation and financing for any of the other projects. The one thing that was not mentioned here is I've heard some farmers up here in the North County, and Supervisor Adam would know more about this, that say that we need to see the Santa Maria River bed deep ripped to improve percolation, that we're not getting the benefit of the flows as we should. I don't know if, where that's at, is a permit need to be made, if it's needed, it's already been made, if money's needed, but that didn't make your list. Final thing, Supervisor Williams brought up this thing about energy. In the good old days, when we had entrepreneurs and partnerships between the public and private sector, somebody like Supervisor Williams would go to Venico and say, "Venico, if you want additional extended reach drilling, we want the natural gas off of that project to fuel the D cell." Now, I don't represent Venico, but if I was Venico, I'd take that in a heartbeat and if I were you guys, I'd take that. In fact, I would ask Venico to build the D cell plant and fuel it for 20 years in exchange for permits for 20 years. That's how people used to do business in an entrepreneurial America, it became win-win. And you're going to clean up the ocean and the air in the process. What's not to love? Anyway, I'd sure like to tell you the stillhead trout story since I'm the only speaker here.
At the break. Supervisor Lavignino?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Ferram, I saw you jotting down on the, because that was brought to me by a constituent about the clay bottom of the Santa Maria River bed and what we're doing to maybe tell that.
Yeah. Supervisors, Madam Chair, Supervisor Lavignino, the, there is a project being pursued and it's either by the Twitchell Management Authority or TMA or the Santa Maria Valley Water Conservation District to actually provide some ripping of the sandbed channel where the river is flowing now to augment inflows. And that's particularly in light of that Twitchell itself actually has water for the first time in, in many years and so that's good news. So there is a process going on with that being headed up by the entities here in the North County.
Supervisor Wolf?
Thank you, Madam Chair. You know, I first want to thank Mr. Lewin and Mr. Ferram for taking on this enormous project and pulling all of the purveyors together. I had an opportunity to review the different agendas and then also some of the responses that came back from the water purveyors. And the fact that, as you said, Mr. Lewin, you have, every purveyor has adopted the resolution and I think as I went through it, I think they were adopted unanimously. So there was a lot of work even on the purveyor side to get, to make sure that what was written here indeed reflected what that board, what their boards wanted. So it was a, it was a large task to get done. So I just hope that there's, that we see some benefit from this. And I'm glad to know that the Office of State Emergency Services, is that what they're called?
Emergency Services.
Is coming back so that there will be some follow-up on this. I think this is a really good project. I was leery at the beginning, as you know, but I, you know, now seeing the final product, I think it's, I think it's very good. So, Madam Chair, if there's no other comments, I'm going to move that we adopt items A, B, and C as noted in the staff report.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Number three.
Chair Hartman, members of the board, item number three is from Community Services. So here I would consider recommendations regarding a resolution for emergency purchases to repair and protect Galita Beach Park in the second district.
Good afternoon, Chair Hartman, members of the board. Before you today, we have an agenda report, but wanted to give you a brief background on what we as the Parks Department are facing out in Galita Beach. To my right is Brian Yanez, who's the Deputy Parks Director, and to my left is Joe Van Wee, who is the Project Manager on the Galita Beach Revetment Project. As you know, Galita Beach welcomes about one and a half million visitors annually. It has picnic areas, public restrooms, restaurant, there's kayaking and paddle boarding rentals, there's a pier with boat launching, fishing, bird watching, horseshoes, and as you know, it's free parking for about 520 spaces at Galita Beach. This is a picture in 2003 of Galita Beach summertime. Just to put it in context, wanted to give you a context of the cyclical nature of what's been going on at Galita Beach. As you can see, there's a lot of sand there at that time. This is the storms which have historically hit Galita Beach and they are cyclical, so, but I wanted to let you know that the damages have been unusually, usually relegated to the east, west part of the beach where the revetment was in '07. This was a little unusual that they hit the middle portion of the beach. This shows the beach rebounding from the 2007 storm event, which again shows the cyclical nature of the storm events and sand supply returning. Severe drought conditions have not only impacted our trees, but also had adverse effect on the beaches. With rains comes increase in sediment that naturally flows to the ocean. The increase in sediment helps nourish our beaches. However, the drought of the past six, seven years has impacted this natural cycle, drastically decreasing the amount of sediment that's deposited on the beach, leaving the beach exposed to storms and large waves accompanying the storms. The major storms over the last three years have scoured away sand and left the beach and park highly vulnerable to harsh wave actions occurring these, during these storm events. As you can see by the recent survey conducted by the U.S. Geological Survey, everyone on the coast is being impacted by storm damage, not just us. This shows the westernmost end of the park. The recently permitted rock revetment has done an excellent job of protecting this portion of the park and the major utility lines running through this area, notably major electrical gas and sewer lines. The storms of 2016, as you can see, created deep crevices in these. This is, this was the area that was not protected by revetment. In an effort to protect the park in 2016, we installed 415 feet of geotextile cells at a cost of $350,000. And we used the cells and sand in an effort to put a softer approach to protecting the This is what the covered geotextile looked like after it was covered in May of 2016. In late fall and winter months, we typically see higher swells that impact beaches. Unfortunately, as you can see in this photo, higher than normal swells during the winter months eroded the sand covering the geotextile cells, exposing the top two feet of the geotextile cells. Those cells are about eight feet high. Again, due to the severe drought conditions, the typical cyclical sand supply did not return in full strength during the summer months to replenish the beach. Those are pictures from 2016. The recent storms in February 2017 did even further damage to Galita Beach. The first major storm in February further eroded the park and geotextile cells. The cells had been installed up to 20 feet landward into the park. The storms eroded the sand and parkland that had covered these cells. This slide shows the Galita Sanitary District vault that became exposed during the January storm events. The vault had been fronted by about 20 feet of parkland that eroded during the first storm in January. This slide shows the Galita Sanitation District installed emergency rocks shown here on January 24th to protect the sewer vault and outfall from the damage. The county installed an emergency protective sand berm the first week of February to protect parking lot three next to the restaurant. Some of the sand berm covered the rock installed by GSD. The Galita Sand District is working with county staff to coordinate their response to the Coastal Commission for their emergency actions. Our Parks Division took emergency action as well in order to protect the park, restrooms, infrastructure, parking lot, and pier. This photo shows how close the restroom is to the park's edge. The landward depth of rock in this photo is 18 feet as directed not only by a coastal engineer from our engineering firm, but also the Coastal Commission Staff Engineer. A portion of the 18 feet of rock is exposed in this photo. The restroom, which is the building in the middle of the photo, is approximately 20 feet to the edge of the installed rock. This next photo shows recovering sand supply after the 2015-16 El Nino storms. Notice also shows the beach with the geotextile cells installed and covered during 2017. The red line here indicates not only the added emergency rock, which is about 950 feet total, but also indicates the location of park edge prior to the 2017 storm. So we have three emergency situations out there in January and February and as such, apply for three emergency permits. And those were, one was the emergency permit with a sand berm, number two was the permit of February 14, and three was the permit of February 22nd, and I can go through those on the next slides. First one, we installed an emergency berm on January 27 at a cost of $75,000 to protect the central restroom and restaurant parking. This was a soft approach again to protect the restroom and restaurant. It did work, however, it was washed away in two days. Well, it did protect during the storm. Yeah, it did. So I'm leading up to why we ended up using revetment at some point. To protect against the second storm, we had little choice but to use rocks because the other softer measures of using just sand berms and the geotextile fabric just didn't work and it was just money, you know, being spent. So with the second emergency permit, we installed 487 feet of rock at a cost of $451,000. With the third emergency permit, we installed 461 feet of rock to protect the remaining portion of the beach that was not protected by rock revetment. And we did have monitors on site, making sure the equipment didn't touch the water, make sure we were adhering to all conditions imposed upon us by the Coastal Commission. So we also had to repair areas that were washed away under the pier and that undermined the structure of the pier. And the pier was closed for over a month for these repairs. In this slide, you'll see that the green and orange section of this map are the emergency revetment work. So right where the arrows are pointing is the emergency revetment work. This slide shows the major utility lines that run underneath the park. Again, from the pictures, you see the Galita Beach does look differently from 2011. Over the past two and a half years, the county has spent over $2 million protecting Galita Beach Park from shoreline erosion and the loss of coastal recreation and park amenities. Notably, since 1995, which is 22 years, the county has spent over $12 million protecting the park, which averages over about half a million a year to protect, including extensive coastal studies and permits.
Supervisor Adam would like to ask a question.
Sure. Have we spent $12 million on all the other parks in Santa Barbara County combined during that period?
Supervisor Adam through the chair, I'd have to get you those numbers, exactly how much we've spent. I couldn't guess this, I've only been here almost two years. But we can get those numbers for you.
Jill might have an idea.
We should probably get the amount of when I became supervisor because...
Is that when it spiked?
No, that's, no. Nice try, Mr. Adam. No, we, we, we got things done. So, you know, this is an emergency and we'll deal with, well, this is an emergency, but I don't, you know, when, I had a feeling you might throw out that number and it was going to raise some hackles, but I think, I think we need to, if you're going to, we need to maybe have some perspective then.
We're going to give it the next slide.
Yeah, okay, good. Thank you.
To the next slide. So the emergency work in 1516 was paid through the Coastal Impact Assistance Program grant. No general fund dollars were used for that. And... And...
Mr. Panam, Chair.
Oh, sorry, Supervisor Lavignino.
So it's no general fund, but those grants could go somewhere else inside our county?
They could have, yes.
Okay.
Right. Wasn't CIAP specifically for Golita Beach?
Was it Jill?
Supervisor Wolf through the chair. Yes, this CIAP grant was simply for Golita Beach. Had we not used those funds for Golita Beach, we could have re-appropriated them to another approved CIAP project. The only one that really would have been able to use any kind of funds of this nature would have been for Santa Claus Lane and Big Access.
And if we're going to talk about expenses, we might want to talk about revenue that the beach generates, which I don't think is part of this. So let's just kind of try and keep it in perspective.
We are going to talk about it, I'm sure.
Let's go back to the presentation here.
Okay, so the next slide would be the 2016/17 costs. As you can see, we did use some deferred maintenance money. There were some CIAP funds, CIAP grant available, and the other funds were the annual allocation that the board provides for Golita Beach.
Supervisor Adam has a question.
So is this actually deferred maintenance?
Yes, we had to use some of our deferred maintenance money.
No, I understand that, but would you define this as...
No, this would have been an emergency.
This is an emergency.
Yes.
You know, didn't we stick deferred maintenance money in a deferred maintenance pile for a deferred maintenance reason?
Yes.
Okay, well, you know, I strenuously object, I don't know about the rest of you, but I strenuously object to utilizing deferred maintenance money that was set aside for that purpose for emergency. You know, I don't mind taking care of emergencies. I have one in my district. I think it's in my district. Is it Gary's, mine, or yours?
I gave it to you in the last minute.
Oh, okay. So...she did. So I have something that I have in emergency, and I'd like to fix that, too. And I don't have problems fixing emergencies. They are emergencies, but I do have a problem just grabbing that money and using it for grab-bag projects when we should come back to the board and release some contingency or something like that for emergencies.
I would just like to ask, would we be eligible for FEMA money?
Yes, we did apply for FEMA money for this emergency work, and both are considered emergencies. So our staff is working with Robert Lewin to make sure we get reimbursed. Okay, next slide. Again, this is the cost of the recent work, the revetment that we just worked on, the emergency rock replacement, pier repair, and the bio and construction monitoring for the engineering firms. And as you stated, Chair Hartman, we did apply for reimbursement for this, and we...if they pay at all, it would be at a 93 percent, 93.75 percent level. And again, this is where the current money came out of an emergency situation. Ideally, you're absolutely right Supervisor Adam, ideally you wouldn't want to use that, but we had to make a decision on the fly to protect the beach. And we're going to be coming back to you in six months, five to six months, to really get a policy decision from you. What do you want to do with the future of Golita Beach? How far do you want to go? What type of protective measures would you like to use? Whether it's a combination, we'll present as many options as possible for the board to consider. Because I...in my opinion, again, probably it's a lot of money to spend. At some point, we'd like to work on a permanent solution that's workable for everybody.
Would you describe the process you're going to use?
We are...we have some engineers that we've engaged, and Coastal Commission would like us to come back and present some of these options, and they could be let natural erosion take place, managed retreat, but we will be studying all of that, all those options. We also are going to have at least a community process where we're going to do some outreach in a community process.
Ms. Miasato.
Chair Hartman and board members, so I don't...I want to clarify something on the emergency use of these funds, because I take responsibility for that. It was a few days before the storm was going to hit in February, and the department had got quotes to put in the rock revetment, which was more extensive than they thought. And my instruction to them was use whatever funds you have, because we don't have a lot in the board's contingency. Use whatever funds you have, and we would go back to the board for ratification and look at the appropriate use of funds. So that was the reason why I asked them to use whatever funds they had. We only had a couple of days before the storm, and so that was the process, and that's why we're here today for your board, to ratify the purchases from the emergency. And again, we do expect that we will be getting some FEMA reimbursement for these costs.
Okay, next slide, Jill. So there are some possible additional costs. You know, there's some areas in Parking Lot 3, turf irrigation, some of the asphalt was damaged in these storms. The community engagement workshops, estimated $75,000. I don't think it'll be that much. I think it'll be much less than that, but we just put it on a high side. The coastal development permit amendment, we still have to work on that. And if the Coastal Commission asks us to remove the emergency work, that would be about $500,000 to remove the current rock revetment. So again, we'll come back. We should hear from the Coastal Commission in September. They've just gave us an extension to come back, and that's September 30th. So we have an extension until September 30th to do the analysis, have the engineers do all the analysis. And they want to see the results of...or the analysis of the impact that rock revetment is having down to the other beaches further south. So they want to see all that analysis before they make a decision for the county. And again, these are our next steps, seeking time extensions, which we just received this morning. Coastal Engineer to review and evaluate the existing data effects of the emergency revetment. Continue the effort with Golita Sanitation District regarding their sewer vault protection. And they are also looking at how far back they can go, the relocation of their vault as part of the analysis, and evaluate all possible future beach and park adapt-to-management options, and come back to you with that. Coordinate the community engagement workshop, and then return to you, I think August, you may be dark, but maybe September, early September, to present some options and ask for guidance from you, a direction.
Supervisor Wolf, and then Supervisor Lavignino.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just...just to my colleagues on the board, I know that this is a heavy lift. This was an unfortunate situation that has occurred at Golita Beach with the emergency storms, the impact to Golita Beach. Our staff responded, as you know, CEO Miasato just mentioned. Decisions had to be made in order to protect our facilities on the park. We've invested a lot of money in the park. When you talk about deferred maintenance, we have repaired and fixed the restrooms. We have new park areas that are there. As all of you know, we have the new bridge being installed. So this is a...we have...this is our community investment at Golita Beach Park. So those decisions were made by staff. Now, you know, some of those decisions, for instance, the geotextile, you know, I think we see what happened. The whole thing was washed away. It tore up. There was impacts down coast. My office was getting phone calls about the...they were finding geotextile down at Moore Mesa. So, you know, can you say that was a bad decision? I don't know. I think it was the best decision that staff made at that time. I know Jill has been out there a lot, I think for a while. It was probably every day, just as Brian. And I know members of the public. And, you know, members of the public have different ideas, I would say. But the fact is, is that this board approved a CDP to keep the rocks in at the western part of the beach. We had certain conditions that we had to abide by. One was making sure that those rocks were covered. I'll ask Mr. Chapchan to comment on this, but my understanding is that we have...I don't want to say have not met those conditions, but that's my understanding, that those rocks have not remained covered. I think that that's going to be an issue that we're going to have to address in the amended CDP. There were other issues that came up. I know you said that we...the machinery should have been placed at a certain distance from the coast, and at one point it wasn't, and we...I guess what I'm trying to say is we have made some mistakes, but I think there were good intentions. And what my hope is, is that, you know, we have new staff, and I can't thank you enough. Brian, you've done a really good job in stepping into this role and working with all of the issues on top of it, Golita Sanitary, which we never had that issue before, although we had talked about it. So really, you've been juggling a lot of things, and here we are today, really just to approve this financial piece for the emergency permit. But as Mr. Chapchan said, this is going to come back to the board. But per the Coastal Commission, per the emergency permits, we have some requirements that we have to meet and research that needs to be done if we want to keep the rocks in or if we remove the rocks or add access points. There's a lot of different options. But I think I...again, I know this is a big lift, but I hope we can get support to move this forward as an emergency item.
Supervisor Lavignino.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Well, I've got two issues that I want to talk about. And one of them is, first off, for me, they don't seem like they're emergencies because they happen...they've been happening for decades. And so every time we have a major storm there, it's like it catches us by surprise, or it's a major emergency. So first off, I really don't like approving expenditures after the fact, especially a million-dollar one, especially with $350,000 coming out of contingency. And I understand that this was a weather event, but this was a weather event that, if you go back, we were talking about 10 days and two weeks before it ever happened. And we even went and got the emergency permits dated February 14th for the Coastal Commission. So I'm just upset that something this large...I think that we should have called the board together with a special meeting for a million-dollar expenditure and said, "Hey, where are we going with this?" And we probably would have done the same thing, probably would have ended up with the same way. But it's just...it's...I don't know. It just seems like...I don't know what the limit is, you know, and would we have made a different decision? Probably not. But I just think the heads up, we could have had a special meeting and talked about this. And that's my first issue. The second one is, when I look at the geotextile cells that lasted less than a year and cost us $350,000, which in Golita Beach terms is just, you know, another $350,000 that just washed away. But what gets me is the irony of, you know, the independent reporting that large pieces of plastic made its way past the mouth of the Golita slough, Supervisor Wolf saying it was found down in Moore Mesa. Nobody even is saying anything about it. It was like, here's these pieces of plastic. If this had been any...anything but ourselves, if this had been an individual for-profit company, we would have gone nuts. We would have opened up the Emergency Operations Center. We would have had press releases. No press release. We didn't alert the public. I didn't see anything on NICSOL. It was just like, okay, we've got plastic floating in the Golita slough where we have endangered species. Why is it that when we do it, it's like, well, you know, we did...it was a bad decision at the time, but it was the best decision we could make? That doesn't fly with anybody else but us. So that...that is just...the irony on that is just...the optics, if you're an outside company dealing with us and trying to get a permit or trying to follow all the rules, and you have something bad that happens, like in a situation like this where you have Mother Nature come in, we deal with people a lot differently than we deal with ourselves as an internal customer. And I've got a problem with that. But, you know, here it is. It's happened. What do we do about it? You know, really, our hands are tied. I really think we have to come up with a long-term solution, because what's...what we're doing right now is not working. The other thing is the optics of just looking at a beach in Santa Barbara, and you've got skip loaders and bulldozers cruising around on it, doing all this major work. It just doesn't fit. Something's not right. And I guess the epiphany for me was to find out, it's not even a natural beach, correct? Isn't it a man-made beach? Okay, so maybe that tells us something. We put the beach in the wrong place. It doesn't belong there, or whoever put it there, whoever created it. Obviously, Mother Nature is telling us that that's not working. That's not the right place, because every few years, half of it washes away. I understand we have a restaurant there that makes us money. That's great, creates revenue, but if...I think it generates $200,000 or $300,000 a year, we're spending more than that to keep that place open. So, you know, I would like to...and this in no way...I, you know, like I said, I think the decision would have been made the same, but in the future, I would prefer that something this large comes to us before the fact, because after the fact, you need four fifths. What happens if two of us decide we don't want to approve this? It's done. It's gone. You really kind of didn't leave us any options. So that's my two cents.
Supervisor Adam.
And what about the seagulls that got their necks caught in that geotextile fabric and drowned, and we'll never know?
Well, actually, we didn't have any reports, but you know what? I don't know if you would use the word, did you go nuts? Well, I don't...maybe you didn't use that word. I kind of did go nuts with...Brian is shaking his head, right? Because...
I can imagine.
Yeah, I think we all get that picture.
Well, also, this...our staff went to the Coastal Commission after the fact to get approval for the geotextile. But they...but it was put in because that was what staff thought was the best approach. And then I was...so we had a lot of meetings, and there was a lot of concern, particularly when it was all...when it all fell apart. I mean, who could be happy with the fact that we spent $350,000 and then it disappears in a year and messes up our beach? And I know Brian was out there with his staff, but I will tell you, there were...and I think I would know, I think we would all know, there were no birds that were strangled. I don't think there was any impact to wildlife, and I think largely because our staff was out there and members of the public were out there pulling this out. And it wasn't a good thing. I didn't think it was a good thing. It was a bad thing. And so, you know, none of this is great. Do we like seeing, you know, these skip loaders on the sand? No. But, you know, I know in the past, Mr. Farrum was helping with sand replenishment. I mean, this has been going on for a long time. And I guess the other piece about the money that's being made from the boathouse, I mean, from the beachside, I think it's...you know, this is...we talk about it all the time. This is just a really treasured part of our community. So this is the one place, other than if you were to go down to Henry's Beach, where this is a public beach. We have the pier. People are out there fishing all the time. Most of the people who are there are low-income. This is where they picnic. This is where they congregate. I think any of us who go there, you see hundreds of people using that place. So to the extent that we can protect it, I think that's what we should do. And again, I understand what you're saying about the financial piece, Mr. Lavignino. I get that.
Supervisor Adam, did you get a chance to finish?
Thank you, Supervisor Adam. Yes, you did. Yes, you did, yes. And by the way, I'm pretty sure that we wouldn't know, because I'm pretty sure that any time there's a piece of plastic with a hole in it, that a seagull must stick its head in there. Yeah, it's like a...
I'm just telling you the fact that I didn't know.
It's got...it must...no, no, I'm not done. I have some serious stuff, too. Seagull? Oh, well, you'll have to give me a little time on that, and I'll come up with something. Anyway, the statement was made by Supervisor Seagull that it was unfortunate. It's not unfortunate. It was totally foreseeable. It's not unfortunate, it was totally foreseeable. This geotextile stuff is, was the best decision the staff made. That's also wrong. They relied to their detriment on an engineering firm. And the engineering firm should be held accountable for this. You know, Surf Rider just gave us a, a piece of public comment here, which I find really compelling. You know, they said, if, if you had a bridge designed and you constructed it and it had blown down in the wind, you wouldn't blame the wind, you'd go right after the engineering firm. So that's a question for Mr. Gazoni is can we, can we go after this engineering firm to reimburse us for all of this stuff?
Chair and Supervisors, we can look at that and we'll report back to you.
Okay. All right. Second point is can we make a deal with Caltrans, Galita Sand, UCSB, PG&E, and SoCal Gas to do a joint maintenance agreement on this thing? Because, you know, we're just sitting here protecting, and the airport, I miss the airport. And there may be others, I don't know. But there should be some other participat...
Caltrans.
I said Caltrans, yeah. No, I mean, you know, that's one alternative, is we just let the thing go and then Caltrans will inherit it. You know, I mean, that's, somebody's gonna, gonna have to stop it at some point. And right now, we're running interference for everybody else. So they need to step up to the plate and get involved in this thing or else, you know, we'll just see who's got the biggest, whatever.
Don't say.
You can imagine. Okay, slide 32. I need, final point, slide 32.
Just getting fast.
Are those expenses in the budget for this coming year or are we planning to come back as they materialize?
Supervisor Adam through the chair, I believe, looking at slide 32. These would be, these are unfunded at this point. We would have to end up coming back. We do have $130,000 a year for Galita Beach, but other than, beyond that, we don't have money in the budget. So when we come back to, to the board in five, six months, we'll lay out some of the options.
Okay, so these are not proposed to be in, in the budget for 17, 18 year?
No, not at this point.
Okay. Thank you.
Supervisor Williams.
Well, I love Galita Beach. I grew up going to Galita Beach and especially since the county made the unfortunate decision of permitting the Hyatt. Now, the Bakar Project, it became one of the only family-friendly spots to go. And so I find myself in this weird position of wanting to do something, but also feeling like we have our strategy all wrong, that our priorities are wrong, and that we're protecting the wrong thing. Because I personally think that people go to a beach park because there's a beach there. And we have taken steps that prioritize the parking that is predominantly used by UCSB over the beach. And the nature of the revetment and armoring is basically a question of, do you want to sacrifice the beach to protect the parking? And I don't. Because it's not used for our purpose on the West End. You have to go there any weekday, you can see the concentration of parking is tilted towards the west end of the park. There would be no reason for that to be beach users because there's nothing on the west end of the park. There's no beach, the restrooms just like barely towards the west, but not even on the west end. The pier, the beach, what's little is left of it, the restaurant, the barbecue pits, they're all farther east and all the parking's on the west. And so we're spending way too much money to ruin the beach and lose the sediment on the beach in order to protect UCSB's parking that UCSB doesn't even want because that's not the part of their circulation plan. So it's just like, you know, under, it's an undergrounded parking spot. I mean, it's a outlaw parking spot. And that's what we're spending all this money successfully defending. And I just don't think it's the right priorities. It feels to me as Supervisor Lavignino indicated that, that we essentially have this in a way to game the public process because we know that emergency permits are easier to obtain. And I know that's not necessarily the way that people's intentions are, but a permanent plan approved by the Coastal Commission is going to be more difficult to do than these emergency permits. So what we do is we get geared up for these emergency permits because we, we know it's harder for the Coastal Commission, give them, or easier for the Coastal Commission to give them, give us emergency permits. I think this is, it is, it makes us as a body guilty of some hypocrisy because if, if another entity were violating their coastal permits and then keeping on being incremental in their permit applications, and I mean the violations like using machinery on the beach in the middle of the summer, when there could be grunion runs and things like that, that staff, that lower-level staff have just did because they didn't know or I don't know why. It's not your fault, but it's, you know, your folks. We would go after them. We would go after people for, I guess, how I would say, gaming the system. And I just have a real problem with that and I don't, I don't know if I want to vote for this, but of course, I, I don't know, what do you do when you already spent the money and you don't have the board vote for something?
Mr. Chapchan, did you have a response to Supervisor Williams?
Yes, thank you Chair Hartman. So during the emergency, we really had two choices, jump on it, protect the beach or not. And I'm not sure, had we not protected, we would have been before you and probably it would have been a bloodbath there too as well. So I think we tried to make the best decision. The geotech fabric wasn't ours, Supervisor Adam is right. It was an engineering firm that suggested it and only because they were building berms of sand and it kept getting washed away by the water. Of course, nobody wants to violate any of the conditions of the permit and unfortunately, the contractor did and we're not using that contractor anymore. But in terms of the park itself, Supervisors, it is, it is heavily used by the community and I think Supervisor Wolf is right. When I was out there recently, 2:30 in the afternoon, there were families picnicking, barbecuing and all the parking, you know, all the lots were, were full and coming and going and, and I took account, you know, there were over 217 cars at one time there and, and in a 10 minutes time slot, 24, 25 cars came and went. It was just, it's very active. It's an active, it's an active park. So again, we're going to come back to you with those options and get direction. What do you want to do with this? Because I don't think long-term this is tenable and we certainly, staff would like direction from the board in terms of what you want to do and how far do you want this protective measure to go.
Mr. Gazoni?
Can I just say something real quick before Mr. Gazoni goes? I just want to address Mr. Williams' comments about permits that are expired. And that was what happened in the past. And right now, we have emergency permits. And it is really important to me, as I think it is to all of us, that we abide by the emergency permits and the timing, Mr. Chapchan just mentioned that, that we have a certain timeframe by which to come back to this board to either come back with a plan to keep the rocks or remove the rocks. And that's, and I think my, I am, I, you know, I'm driving these guys crazy, but I am insisting that we don't do what we had done in the past and not abide by the Coastal Commission permits. When we had those emergency permits on the West End, it went on and on and on. And then we finally made our decision. I don't want that to happen this time. We need to respect the Coastal Commission, follow their dates. If we need to get an extension, we will do that and then we will move forward. I'm sorry, Mr. Gazoni, I interrupted from what you were going to say.
Chair Hartman, Supervisors, if I could just bootstrap on that. Our recommendation to CEO's office and staff was to bifurcate this as it's been done, which is to bring the ratification process to you today, recommend your four fifths vote for procurement integrity, and then come back to you down the road with, with a list of options. But the recommendation is that you, through a four fifths vote, approve staff's recommended actions.
I have a question, and then Supervisor Adam and Supervisor Lavignino. Has the county, has this board never made a policy decision before about managed retreat versus armoring and protection that would have guided these expenditures?
Chair Hartman and Supervisors, the board did. So back in 2015, I believe, when we, it was before the board, after the EIR on our, the board's proposal and what we were going to propose to the Coastal Commission. And it was to look at retention of the revetment with some conditions, including beach and revetment, revetment monitoring and adaptive management plans to protect the beach and the park. So the board did make a decision and so when it came, the time came to make an emergency decision on the purchase with a lot, with little time, that's what we relied upon.
Okay. So there is a context and your actions were within that policy and now our decision is whether we're gonna, I mean, we need to decide to, by a four fifths vote, to spend the money. I think we've had a good discussion and we can, this will provide a greater context, I think, as Mr. Chapchan goes forward on this. But why don't we hear from the two Supervisors who have their lights on and then go for public comment and then come back? So Supervisor Adam?
Well, I was just going to throw an idea out there and that is that we do a abandoned retreat. I'm never going to vote to spend the amount of money. I don't know if you're familiar with the amount of money that was involved in the managed retreat. But if you do an abandoned retreat and let the Coastal Commission deal with it, you know, the Coastal Commission has made it very expensive to manage this, this piece of property. And, you know, I see all the, the value to the community in that property and it's, it's a very high value. And not just because we get a little bit of, which really is not, it's de minimis, the amount of money that we get from that park through the lease of the restaurant. But it's, I know that it's a really important, you know, you look at Waller Park and the use that it gets up here and that's kind of the South Coast Waller Park. And it's in a convenient spot and like Mr. Chapchan says, the traffic goes in and out. I've been down there, in fact, I've been down there with Supervisor Wolf and seen it and it's, it's a very valuable asset for us. But, you know, if the Coastal Commission is bent on making us spend millions and millions of dollars, which we no longer have frankly, then I'd say we just hand it over to them and tell them to give all of the people in our area the bad news that, that they're not going to be able to have that anymore.
Supervisor Lavignino?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Well, just when you come back in September, I'd like, also like to see, I don't know how we ever came up with a million and a half visitors. How did we, it just keeps sounding like it just keeps getting repeated, but where did we ever come up with that number to start?
Supervisor Lavignino through the chair. There's actually a car counter there as people exit and...
So does this subtract the UCSB students that are going and parking over?
Well, it doesn't really count those, it just counts cars going, right? And so I can tell you, when I sat there for 10 minutes just watching cars go in and out, in 10 minutes, there were 24, 25 cars just going in and out. So if you multiply that, and the multiplier is two and a half people per car, apparently, even if you take it at two people per car, it's about 1.2 million visitors. And I saw cars in there with one person, other cars with three, four people in there. So it's an average. And all of our parks have those counters, by the way.
Yeah, I know. That's why I was looking at like Sterns Wharf. This place actually outdraws Sterns Wharf, which was, that's, that's what the, I mean, if that's the number, million five. So that's what drew my attention was, I was going, well, it can't be that much. But anyway, I guess it doesn't really matter if there's, you know, a million or a million and a half visitors, it's heavily used, you know? And I was just curious of how many of those were actually students that are parking over there. But, so I just think when you come back in September, we ought to look at all options. You know, I've had some people that said, well, you have to protect it because 217 is right there. Well, then where does Caltrans play, I mean, where are they in this? Where is the city of Galita in this? Where is everybody? Why are we the ones absorbing everything? Where's the airport? They all should have a vested interest in protecting that beach so it doesn't go and wipe out their assets.
So let's turn to public comment.
Chair Hartman, Members of the Board, we have two requests to speak. Michael Rattray and then Andy Caldwell.
Thank you Chair. Michael Rattray, forensic Galita Beach. My prepared comments are not, they're moot at this point because you folks have had a discussion that's far greater than the things I maybe wanted to talk about at this point. Just from our standpoint, forensic Galita Beach has been around since the first working days with Supervisor Rose back in, just before Janet came on board, but then through Janet's tenure also. And we also really truly believe that this is the people's park. And a little deference to some of the way that thoughts were done. Bottom line, the state made this a landfill back in the 40s. A lot of it had to do with, with the airport construction, but it's been there ever since. And I guess what I wanted to say is that you can't have partial protection and that's really what this beach park has had for the, I can't even do the math, 70 years. We've had partial protection. On the east side, it's 100%. On the west side, it's just been a checkerboard. And I know we've gone through in the last 10 years, a lot of different ideas of how best to look at protection, hard structures versus soft structures, but that's where we are today. We may not all in this room and in the community agree that what George and his team has done, which at this point is, it's all rock revetment, but it's there now and it is protecting the park and the beach. We may not want that going forward because we got to decide, what is that ratio between the constituents that go? Are they there for the beach, are they there for the park? They're there for both. They really are. And, and I go there every day. I ride my bike, I do my paddleboard, I go off of that west side. And I have to tell you that the real reasons for that, through that 70 years, is for the enjoyment of the people that otherwise don't have other facilities to go to. So we hope that we can be a part of that discussion going forward and be part of those options. And I understand the cost and it's got to be looked at. But at this point, there are some costs, the rocks are there. So if you can keep that in mind going forward, how can we best make this work? Because there's a lot of moving parts and a lot of variables in this thing. But I think we could all find an answer and I'm hoping we can do that. Thank you very much.
Mr. Caldwell?
Madam Chair, Members of the Board, Andy Caldwell, representing COLAB. We do ask that you would take a giant step backwards and, and really ask yourselves, to what degree are we being hypocritical? To what degree do we have one set of standard for things we like and a different set of standards for things we don't like? You know, the bottom line here is, is we acknowledge this is a popular park, we acknowledge it's a park worth saving, but the fact is, is you are working against Mother Nature. You would not tolerate that in the private sector. You would not tolerate it for a minute. You would not allow year after year of emergency projects to be done to save something that you said was not, was artificial and non-natural and was against Mother Nature. You wouldn't allow it. But you not only allow it, you foot the bill. The other thing, you would, you don't allow, in, in a lot of the deals with government finance, you require 100% cost reimbursement. But not in this area. You refuse to charge for parking. Santa Barbara charges for parking, the county charges for parking elsewhere, but you won't charge for parking. That's a basic user fee. It's cost recovery. And getting to Supervisor Adam's point, you're paying the bill to save other jurisdictions' infrastructure. How did that become your... How did that become your liability, which means it's county liability, which is spread throughout the region, when in reality, how many of these people are residents of Santa Barbara and Galita? Plus, Isla Vista has a Parks and Rec district. The airport has funds. Why aren't they paying? Why is everybody else paying except the users and the people with the infrastructure that needs to be protected? You're all over the map here. And again, you just passed 200 and something bucks an hour on every applicant going to PND, because you have to have cost recovery, but you won't charge cost recovery for Galita Beach. Why? You won't allow oil companies, you didn't want them to have an easement under a road, even though there's no destruction to the road and the pipelines are in better shape than the road. But here, we'll dump $12 million into an unnatural beach, incurring everybody else's charges and expenses in the process. You know, plastic, how many plastic bags could we have made from the geotiles? Plastic is plastic. We have this horrendous reaction to plastic from humans, but not if the county put it in there. Did you guys recover all the plastic, like you asked the oil companies to recover every drop of oil that was spilled?
That's your time.
Double standards.
Supervisor Wolf, and then Supervisor Williams?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Well, I'm gonna let Mr. Williams go.
Well, I, I wanna see this place work, you know, I can really empathize, it's really hard for me, because I can really empathize with both the spirit of the friends of Galita Beach Park and Surf Rider. Both of them love this place, right? And I just feel like revatment all along is expensive, Coastal Commission is unlikely to permit that into perpetuity, and that it is, let's put 100% of our eggs in the parking and park basket when the beach matters too. And I look at other examples, because that was cited, that other areas underwent storm damage, and I see places with much greater wave energy being directed at it that manage that wave energy much better. And I'll give you a prime example, the Ventura Riverhead and Surfers Point. That is quintessentially what Surf Rider is talking about when they say managed retreat. The parking lot was moved back. Cobble, which is a natural form around rivers, was used as the armoring agent, so even Surf Rider, you know, and their managed retreat uses armor, it's just cobble, as opposed to big rocks. And what happens at Surfers Point is, the beach has come back. In that area where the parking lot was moved back to, there is now yearly a decent amount of sand, this is at the tip of the point, the very end of the parking lot, and dunes are growing. Oh my God, we haven't seen those in a long time. And then you have a portion where you, a lot of the wave energy is directed at where the sand doesn't stay, but the cobble moves a little, but, you know, the infrastructure remains. And so I think there's other strategies. I just can't go for using big rock revatment all along this park, because it sacrifices the beach to save the parking and the park. And I think it's also, as was mentioned by Supervisor Adam, it's us bearing all the expense for everybody else's problem. And, you know, I don't see why we're paying for parking that, for UCSB, that UCSB doesn't even want, because it defeats the purpose of their circulation plan, and it defeats the representations they've made to the community of Galita and to the Coastal Commission about their own circulation plan. And I don't see why we wouldn't, if other people want us to defend their infrastructure, then they should help us pay for it.
Supervisor Adam, and then I'd like to come back to the question, that is, are we gonna ratify this expenditure? So Supervisor Adam?
Well, can I just ask as part of that, what happens if we, if we don't approve something that already happened?
Chair Hartman and Supervisors, my recommendation would be that you ratify this. You've taken, really your purchase orders are out there, because you have a county officer who has assigned those purchase orders. We have a county code provision that allows those emergency procurements, and really for the public to have confidence in the future on emergency purchase orders being valid, I would recommend that you ratify this action.
Supervisor Adam?
Okay, well, you know, this is beyond the scope of the question today, but, you know, when we come back, Mr. Chapchan, I really, really want some options that are focused on least cost, and I really, really want you to have had substantial discussions with all these other entities, because it's ridiculous that we've gotten this far without going down that road. And, you know, cobble's great, but the reason that they wrapped the cobble in the geotextile is so that it wouldn't wash away. And you gotta have a big enough rock that it doesn't wash away to protect what you're trying to protect, or put enough smaller rocks in a bag and hope that the bag doesn't wash away, which is what happened. So, you know, that was just bad engineering right there, and we should really go after that engineering firm, because that's just ridiculous. So I think, as we get out of this thing, the only way we're gonna be able to go on is, in a reasonable way, is to look at some really least cost alternatives and, you know, making other people somewhat responsible, including the Coastal Commission, frankly. You know, I'm just full up with the Coastal Commission telling us how we're gonna go spend a lot of money that they don't have to be responsible for. You know, it's nice that the Coastal Commission's out there and everything, and, you know, thank you for your input, but, you know, don't sit here and tell us we gotta spend $2 million. And how much we spent engineering all that and going through the whole public process and all that, you know, I don't wanna, I don't wanna go back down that road. You know, that was, that was, that was somewhere between a half and a million dollars, right? I mean, there was a lot of money just spent talking about, talking about it. So we gotta stop doing these kind of things at this point, and just figure out what the least cost alternatives are, and bring those back to us, and see who's willing to play, and how much they're willing to play, and then we can make a plan. You know, but it's gotta have ongoing maintenance as part of the, you know, if these other entities are willing to play. And maybe it's cheaper for SoCal Gas and PG&E to relocate their facilities. Yeah, it may be cheaper for them to just relocate their facilities and say, hey, we're not interested. But we don't, we don't know until we go have those discussions, and I think that all needs to take place by the time we come back. And I think we're coming back in September, is that right? Okay, so that should be enough time to get some pretty good input on that and come back with something reasonable.
Supervisor Wolf, last word and a motion?
Yeah, my last word is that I wanna thank my colleagues for this discussion, and staff for what you've done and taking, you know, some heat, but I also hope that you note the appreciation as well for everything that you've done, and to the public for being here and sending us letters. So with that, Madam Chair, I'm going to ask that the Board of Supervisors adopt item A, B, C, D, and E as noted in the staff report.
Do you have a second?
I'll second that. And I do wanna just comment on what Supervisor Wolf said. I hope, you know, I don't hold you guys responsible at all, staff responsible at all, for what you're trying to do. You are being tasked with what we've asked you to do, and, you know, you're fighting an uphill battle against something that we can't win. So, you know, when you said that, I think, I just, if I came across as, as, I'm just frustrated with the, with what we're doing. And I know in my meetings with you, you are just as frustrated that we can't come to some sort of fix. And so I hope I didn't overstep.
Actually, I didn't mean it to reflect you, I thought myself, because sometimes I was being kind of harsh.
Because I'm, I'm, no problem there.
So you seconded, right? Okay, so we have a motion in a second, and Supervisor Williams?
I just wanna clarify, because there is some strategy over this. Cobble was rejected as a material by the engineers, and it was rejected because...
...the engineers.
Yeah, the ones, the ones that said this was gonna last for 50 years, those guys. And they rejected it because they said it's not native to Galita Beach. First of all, I don't know what's native to a beach that is artificial, and secondly, I don't know what any place on the coast that doesn't have cobble, because any place that has rivers, you know, has cobble, right? Ventura Point, any surfer can tell you, anytime there's a storm, the waves at Ventura Point will be three to four times bigger than Galita Beach. Right? So that's not necessarily three to four times more wave power directed, but it is a good indication of how much force is hitting that area. And it hits it, and the cobble moves, and it moves back. It, it does not move that much. And maybe it's about the size of the cobble, but I do think that we have not looked at that part of the strategy deeply enough.
Supervisor Adam, last word?
Yes, you know, the thing about cobble is, if cobble's native and it's there because it's there, that's one thing, and I think that you'll find that if you restored that to its original condition, there wasn't any cobble there, because it's Galita Slough is all, that's where all the sediment falls out. So any kind of stones that you would have would fall out in there first, so they'd never make it to the beach. So unless the beach is gonna push up cobbles from the bottom of the ocean, which is pretty unlikely, you probably wouldn't have much beach there at all. It would probably go back to something that was durable, like a clay lens or some rock, and just stop right there, and that's probably what they filled from and created the beach. So, you know, not all beaches the same, is the point.
I had one question about the process going forward, the stakeholder process. Will that just involve the community, or will you bring in the agencies in the community together?
I think we can bring both in together. I think what I heard is, we wanna, we wanna hear from all the agencies, we wanna make sure that they, they know that they have an investment in this, in this asset, and if they wanna, it protected, they need to step up.
And whatever scientific basis they need. Okay, well, I'm really hopeful that that process may focus us a bit more for our next discussion. So we have a motion in a second, maybe we have a roll call vote?
Ms. Wolf?
Aye.
Mr. Adam?
Aye.
Mr. Lavenino?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Miss Hartman?
Aye.
Pass this five vote.
Mr. Guzoni, we have a closed session coming up. Can you tell us what we're gonna do?
Chair Hartman and Supervisors, today in closed session, you're noticed for two items of anticipated litigation, significant exposure to litigation, meeting with county counsel for a total of two cases. I estimate we can have you back by 2 o'clock.
Okay, 2 o'clock it is.
2017, in the Santa Maria Hearing Room after closed session. Mr. Gazoni, would you give us our report?
Chair Hartman and Supervisors, today in closed session, the Board considered two cases with legal counsel significant exposure to litigation, two separate cases, no reportable actions.
And Mr. Allen, would you read number four into the record?
Chair Hartman and members of the Board, item number four is from the County Executive Office. It's a hearing to consider recommendations regarding the Human Services Commission Award of Fiscal Year 2017-18 General Fund Mini Grants.
Ms. Missich?
Thank you. Good afternoon, Chair Hartman, members of the Board. This item is on your agenda today to consider the Human Services Commission's recommendations regarding what we term the mini-grants. The mini-grants are offered annually, and 2017-18 marks the third year of a larger three-year funding cycle for which these are awarded. I'm going to turn the presentation over to Susan Foley. She's going to walk you through the Human Services Commission's recommendation, and Susan is staffed to the commission.
Good afternoon, Supervisors. Ms. Terry said this is for...
My microphone is working.
Hello, can you hear me? Oh, good. This is for the fiscal year 2017-18, recommendations from the Human Services Commission on mini-grants. They call them capacity-building mini-grants. Just a brief background, Human Services Commission has advised the Board on the county's community or Human Services needs since 1977. The annual budget, which has stayed the same throughout that time, is $1.2 million. For about a year, in 2014-2015, the Commission actually did a reconnaissance and did some data collection and some needs assessments, and came up with a new three-tiered concept that the Board then approved in 2015. The three tiers are best practices, which are services that follow nationally-approved standards and use nationally-approved tools and assessments in managing their programs to determine outcomes. And the capacity building is the mini-grants. That's the capacity-building mini-grants. So the way that it's broken out is the best practices and basic services are on a three-year cycle, so they were committed, and this is when the third year of the three-year cycle with the fiscal 2017-18 year. The mini-grants have been annual. Best practices grants have ranged between $50,000 and $100,000 each for the grants. Basic services have been between 20 and 50, and the mini-grants range from $5,000 to $7,000. Now, we have a new three-year cycle coming up in fiscal year 2018-19. The Commission had an application process and a full and lengthy review process, and the full Commission approved the recommendations of the Allocation Subcommittee of the Commission in March 2nd, 2017. This was a noticed meeting. In summary, the HSC, Human Services Commission, recommends funding 11 mini-grants. We had 42 requests for about, just under $300,000. They recommended funding 11 for fiscal year 2017-18, and the total for those 11 is $71,500. There are a number of criteria that the Commission uses to make their recommendations. They look at clear, quantifiable, capacity-building outcomes, strong proposals for the amount of funding, collaborative efforts, always looking at geographic distribution to meet the needs, and a clear and eventual benefit to a targeted population that the agency might serve. So they followed all of this criteria. They try to work to support agencies moving toward evidence-based practices, and again, strong applications with clear outcomes. Program examples include things like staff and board training, database development, media outreach, volunteer recruitment, marketing, advertising, and anything that moves them towards evidence-based practices. So these are the 11 recommendations for Sarah House, counsel on alcohol and drug abuse, child abuse and listening mediation, domestic violence solutions, Family Service Agency, Girls, Inc., Santa Barbara, Pacific Pride, Senonas Valley People Helping People, Senonas Valley Senior Citizen Foundations in Buellton, Santa Maria Valley Meals on Wheels, and United Way in Northern County. And you can see just the diversity of projects are the things that we just talked about, doing advocacy, outreach, training, software development or purchase of database to better track clients, that kind of thing, and training. The geographic distribution worked out to be fairly even, county-wide 44%, and south, north, and mid are close to 20% each. So the recommended actions is just to receive and consider the recommendations from the Human Services Commission for the award of the Human Services Grants to grantees for the use of the general funds for this fiscal 2017-18, agency-capacity-building mini-grants, again totaling $71,500, and B, receive and consider public comment related to the HSC awards recommendations for the use of the county general funds for the fiscal year 2017-18, and C, determine that the programs recommended for funding are necessary to meet the social needs of the population in the county, and D, approve the award of mini-grants recommended by the HSC totaling $71,500 as specified in attachment A, and authorize such expenditures subject to the appropriation of the Board of Supervisors during the fiscal 2017-18 budget process, and E, find that the proposed actions are not a project under the California Environmental Quality Act because they are governmental, fiscal, organizational, administrative activities that do not result in direct or indirect physical changes in the environment.
Thank you. Are there any questions? Supervisor Labanino?
Well, this doesn't have anything to do with this, but I'm just happy to report that today, as part of our A agenda, I filled out my complete quota for, thanks to Ms. Kathy Boyson, that I have all my Human Services Commissioners in place.
Thank you.
I do have a question about this. So, question is, do you find these to be effective? I mean, really, $5,000, $7,000, or will we be better off, and I know we'll probably discuss this at the end of these three years, to go back to doing it the old way, I just find it hard to believe that giving somebody $5,000 or $7,000 has an impact as opposed to if we did one grant of $70,000, we might get a lot more bang for our buck.
Right. Well, Supervisor, through the chair. The answer to that from my point of view, which is from the Commission's point of view, and we have two Commissioners here in attendance in Santa Barbara, and they may want to speak. The Chair, Michelle Mickeywitz, and then the Chair of the Allocations Committee, Suzie Cawthon, are in Santa Barbara, in the hearing room. But the mini-grants have been extremely popular from the agencies for a couple of reasons, and one is that it's very difficult for them to find funding for operations of this nature. Two, they really have been proven to increase the capacity so that their work is actually improved. So if you purchase a database, and it helps you speed up your ability to track, and you're not doing that manually, and you can even do it remotely, there's a great benefit to improving your database and your software systems, and many of these have used this for that purpose. They've used it to outreach to, I think important ones have been reaching out to Spanish media or LGBT groups that they haven't been able to reach. So it's been an effective source of funding that they only need a small amount of to create a pretty good outcome. Once the senior group, if you notice on the list here, is purchasing a van, because guess what the greatest problem is for the seniors accessing those resources? Transportation. So that's a huge bang for the buck in the minds of the Commissioners. However, so the greater grants of $70,000 are for programs and services, but this is for capacity building, so the agency can do a better job at what they do.
Any other questions, comments? And we'll go to public comment.
We do have one request to speak. We're going to go to Santa Barbara for Michelle Mickeywitz.
Madam Chair, members of the Board, I'm Michelle Mickeywitz. I'm the Chair of the Human Services Commission, and with me is our Chair of our Allocations Committee, Suzie Cawthon. And we're here on behalf of the Commission, hoping you will support our recommendations for the mini-grants, as these grants are one of the ways that we support the nonprofit network and ensure they will be best able to meet the needs of our residents. As you know, nonprofit agencies provide essential human services, and they do it well. They allow people to be served in their local communities, and they provide services in a cost-effective manner at a cost far less than if the services were provided through the county. On behalf of the Human Services Commission, I want to thank the Board for its investment in human services and for the nonprofit agencies that serve our most vulnerable residents. Thank you.
Thank you. And that was the only public comment. So are there any additional comments on behalf of the Supervisors, Supervisor Wolf, and then Supervisor Adam?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to express my appreciation to the Commission for their hard work, and, you know, I'm happy to go ahead and move this item unless there's other comments to the contrary. So I'll go ahead and move this item.
I'll second.
Supervisor Adam?
Yeah, I wasn't going to second. No, no, I think this is a nice-to-have, not a need-to-have, and I think it's inappropriate at any time for us to spend this money in this way, but especially in light of our service level reductions and other budget challenges, I'm not going to be able to support it.
Supervisor Labanino, and then Supervisor Williams.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Well, and I, you know, I guess my position on it is, what's the timeframe when you come back to us in the next cycle, when we take another look at the overall, how we do this?
The Commission is interested in revisiting the three-year, the new three-year concept. We're going to take a look at the data that has come in from the reporting and see how effective it's been. We're going to do some site visits with some of the organizations who received funding, and they're going to make a recommendation somewhere in the summer or early fall about whether they want to continue this model, or whether they recommend that we continue this model. And they would, we can come back to you with that conversation. The NOFA would go out in the fall, generally in November, if we do it.
So I noticed, reading some of the budget materials, it said that, you know, we're talking about outside agency requests, separate from Human Services Commission.
Supervisor Labanino, through the chair. So your Board's direction to us in March was to not do the outside agencies, correct? Which, just for the public's understanding, outside agency requests were those that came to us at the budget hearing for the Board's review, which is separate from this process. And just to add to what Susan said, the NOFA is published in November, so any Board direction, even this summer, to help clarify what the Board would like to do in the upcoming years would be helpful to staff, because Susan starts working on that this summer.
Supervisor Williams, and then Supervisor Wolf.
Well, I want to thank the Human Services Commission as well, and my members on there, one of whom I saw. And, you know, just, I think this is really good, what we do. I hope we can continue it. Though I would like to have advice from the Commission that if there's a fiscal impact, whether we would absorb it gradually, obviously that's not on this item today, thankfully, but whether, how, I would like their advice, the Commission's advice, on how to deal with that fiscal reality that has been cited.
Supervisor here?
Okay, I have a comment.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah. Oh, I'm sorry. I just want to make it known that the current three-year cycle, if that's in any way impacted for the third year, then we would know soon, we'd need to know sooner. The summer reconnaissance is about the new three-year cycle.
I think what I'm asking specifically is whether the Commission, whatever we wait on will mean a bigger cut. So whether we take a smaller cut that starts next fiscal year, or whether we wait and take more pain later on. And that's the tough part, because, you know, that's the reality that we're living in, and if we instead only make county social services take the brunt of the cuts, then the same people that are served by these organizations will be hurt by the cuts we make in county social services. So it's kind of like, you know, just determining how to hurt the most, the people most in need, which is really the most depressing part about this kind of work, but it is a fiscal reality, and I'm at least of the philosophy that taking smaller cuts are easier to absorb over time than waiting to take any pain at all and then taking bigger ones.
I just had a question. We're in the third year of a three-year grant cycle. There's no question of pulling back money from those grants, is there?
Chair Hartman, our recommendation is not to pull back money from those that are relying on the funds for 2017-18. So those would be, Susan is bringing forward that mini-grants that we do annually, and those who've already received approval from us for the three-year grants, our recommendation is not to reduce those at this time.
And the issue before us today is just as there, do we, in a sense, ratify the recommendations made by the Commission?
That's correct.
Supervisor Wolf?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yeah, my only comment was to basically just reaffirm what we just heard, and that is to ensure that we maintain our commitments that we've made in the past.
We have a motion and a second. Could we have a roll call vote?
Ms. Wolf?
Aye.
Mr. Adam?
No.
Mr. Labanino?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Ms. Hartman?
Aye.
Pass this forward to one.
So on to item number six.
Chair Hartman, members of the Board, item six is from the County Executive Office. It's a hearing to consider recommendations regarding a status report on the internal-facing organizational strategic plan.
You're making the next presentation as well?
I am. Good afternoon again, Chair Hartman and members of the Board. It's my pleasure to be here today, and I'm joined by my colleagues Matt Pontus, Eric Peterson, and Glenn Russell to provide you with an overview of the County of Santa Barbara's first internal-facing organizational strategic plan. First, a little bit about strategic planning. Strategic planning seeks to answer such questions as, what is our mission? What are our assumptions about the future? How should we be organized for our future? And strategic planning helps an organization create a desired future within the context of a dynamic and changing environment. And a strategic plan is a very disciplined effort, and it helps produce fundamental decisions about what actions we will take and guide the organization. It helps the organization determine who it serves, what it does, and why, with a focus on the future. Strategic planning also helps set priorities, focus our energy and resources, strengthen our operations. It leverages various teams' strengths to address shared priority organizational issues and help gain agreement on desired outcomes and results. Further, it can help allocate resources during difficult fiscal times. Our strategic plan is focused on our organizational systems, our processes, and our culture. This is the framework for our strategic planning effort. We begin with an emphasis on our newly created values, which are trust and ethics, customer focus and public service, accountability and professionalism, and innovation. And Eric Peterson will go over the values a little bit later in the presentation and how we came to those values. The plan also has a number of organizational goals, and that's really the meat of the plan. You can see the four goals here, talent management, organizational culture, quality services and processes, and technology and facilities. How we go about achieving each of those goals helps us best attain the Board's stated policy goals, which are referenced above. A little bit about the strategic planning process and how we got to where we are today. A comprehensive employee survey was conducted way back in November of 2015. The Human Resources Department did an excellent job in administering that survey, and over 60% of the employees responded to that. That gave us a wealth of information about what is happening in the organization, what the employees value, how they felt overall about their jobs, and key improvements in the organization were suggested at that time. We want to capitalize on that work, so again, in 2016, we began a process to evaluate additional types of information required from the organization. So we did some additional surveys, as well as an organizational strategic, or an organization environmental scan. So we did additional surveys primarily to ask the employees about mission, vision, and values, which are fundamental parts of any strategic plan. We also conducted the environmental scan. We looked at demographics, labor trends, and we also looked out on the horizon and looked at some of the economic factors potentially impacting the organization. In May of 2016, the County Executive Team and the Department Head Team came together in a full-day strategic planning session and began working with the results of all of the surveys and the scan and developing the mission, vision, values, and goals. Then in summer of 2016, we took all of that information that we had created during that day and put it back out to the organization in the form of several additional surveys. We wanted to check in and make sure we were on the right track. We wanted to make sure we heard the right types of things, and we're developing the type of mission, vision, and goals that were consistent with what the employees were telling us throughout our various surveys. We also then began the development of an IAP, which is an implementation action plan, and that's the various actions that we're going to take on a day-to-day basis to achieve those goals. We are currently in the process of reviewing and, or finalizing the implementation action plan. It is in draft right now, and the draft is in your packet, and we're reviewing that in the context of what's currently happening as we move through the budget discussions, as well as the budget rebalancing effort. We want to make sure that all of those efforts are working together, and what we ultimately place in the action plan is going to work and be attainable by the organization and help us meet our longer-term goals. Once that particular aspect of the plan is complete, we're going to roll it out to the whole organization in summer of 2017. So I'm going to turn the next piece of the presentation over to Glenn Russell, and he's going to discuss our organizational vision and mission and how those came to be.
So I'm going to be presenting the vision and mission statements, and as Terry mentioned, these came out of a May 20th all-day workshop where department heads sat around, broke into groups, came up with different mission statements, put them up on the wall, talked about them, tweaked them with Terry's help and the help of the consultant. We achieved consensus on these sort of high-level vision and mission statements. A critical element of the strategic plan is setting the vision. The future is impossible to predict, but contemplating scenarios and developing a statement about where we as an organization want to go and work toward is essential to any plan. The vision describes the ideal future and what we aspire to. Santa Barbara County employees are empowered to deliver exceptional public service to diverse communities while striving for continuous improvement in an environment of trust, accountability, and fiscal responsibility. and fiscal responsibility. When these were presented to the employees, over 71% of the employees responding to the survey either agreed or strongly agreed that the vision statement was appropriate for our organization. Moving on to the mission statement, which describes the purpose of our organization, why we are here, and what we do. Deliver high-quality and innovative services that assist Santa Barbara County residents and visitors in enjoying a safe, healthy, and prosperous life. 75% of the employees either agreed or strongly agreed with this mission statement. A common thread throughout the mission and vision and the entire plan for that matter is public service. It is why we are here and it is what we do. Through all of the discussions and questionnaires responded to at all levels of the organization, it was evident that this was a core theme and a core value. And with that, I'd like to turn it over now to Fire Chief Eric Peterson to discuss this value and others.
All right. Well, thank you, Glenn. I'll talk about our organizational values. As Terry mentioned earlier, core values are the key shared beliefs that we will use to guide and sustain us now and into the future, which, you know, potentially challenging times ahead. How effectively we incorporate and adhere to these values will likely be a key indicator of the strength of our organization. So the values we landed on are trust and ethics, exemplified by making ethical decisions, communicating transparently, good follow-through, listening and empathy, and the golden rule, customer focus. Examples are continuously improving customer service, taking complaints seriously, and treating our customers with warmth and respect. Our organizational values continued accountability and professionalism, exemplified by setting clear expectations for county programs, performance reporting, identifying mistakes and correcting them quickly, and being dedicated and dependable. Innovation. Examples are being open to new ideas, placing a high value on risk-taking and adaptability, and continuously looking for opportunities to improve. So here are our survey results. We had a full day, as Glenn mentioned, of planning. And after we did that full day, we put this out to employees to ensure that these values resonated with them. And we were overall very, very encouraged with the results. As you can see up here, trust and ethics resonated with 85% agreed or strongly agreed with this value. Customer focus and quality public service was 88%. Accountability and professionalism, 84%, and innovation, 72%. We were particularly encouraged by the fact that customer focus and quality public service beat out every other value, and we think that that says a lot about the people that work here in Santa Barbara County. This is called an internal-facing plan for a good reason. This was a very inclusive and collaborative project. I want to give kudos to the CEO's office for making sure that aligned employees all the way up to executive staff had a lot of input into this plan. This is a very unique plan to Santa Barbara County. It's our plan, and I think the results speak for themselves. This had a lot of input. And I'd like to turn it now over to our ACO, Matt Pontus, to discuss the four organizational goals. As you can see on the slide above, there are four primary goals for our organizational strategic plan. Goals are outcome statements to guide implementation of the plan. These goals and the action steps that follow are part of the implementation action plan, which provides direction and focus and structure to how we ultimately achieve our mission and our vision. The goals are: Goal A, Talent Management. This goal seeks to strengthen employee recruitment and retention, prepare the next generation of county-appointed leaders, and enhance public's effectiveness in providing public services. Goal B, Organizational Culture. Cultivate a strong organizational culture centered on our values, strengthen teamwork across our departments, and enhance communications with, between, all of our county team members. Goal C, Quality Services and Process Improvements. In this goal, we seek to continually improve our internal processes, methods of delivering quality services to the county of Santa Barbara communities. In this goal, you can see we reached 88% of the survey respondents that agreed or strongly agreed with this goal. And in Goal D, we focused on technology and facilities, to invest strategically in county facilities, processes, and technology tools to ensure that all employees have the resources they need to efficiently carry out their responsibilities. In this goal, 90% of those surveyed agreed or strongly agreed with this. Now I'd like to turn it back over to Terry.
Okay, so that is the essence of the plan, our mission, vision, values, and goals. And then how do we go about actually achieving those plans? What are the next steps? And that begins the discussion about the implementation action plan. An implementation action plan is a management tool and identifies how the county will specifically implement its strategies to achieve our long-term goals. The implementation action plan, again, there's a draft within your packet. For each goal, as Matt mentioned, we have four goals overall, which he presented, but within those four goals are 36 distinct action plans or actions or strategies that we'll be undertaking, working throughout the organization. Each of the goals, however, does have success indicators, which are metrics to gauge our progress towards goals. So at this time next year, where, what did we achieve and how well did we do in each of the goal areas? They also identify the action steps, which again are within the draft you have before you, which are the milestones, milestones are very high-level steps to implement the strategies and achieve the goals. There's also the timeframe in which things are going to start and end, or guidelines for when we will have specific items completed. We're still working on the timeframes. Again, we're working, we'll be looking at that more closely after we complete our budget process and rebalancing effort. Again, whatever timeframes are put forward, we want to make sure they're realistic and attainable. And we want to set strong expectations that we'll be working towards this timeframe. So we really want to focus on getting those right. We'll also be taking a look at the resource requirements. Is there additional staffing that's needed or any type of allocation of resource? Especially in these times, we want to make sure that expectations are managed and that anything we undertake as part of the implementation action plan again can be attained. And then responsibility. We've assigned key individuals that are responsible for coordinating the implementation of the goals and the action plans. So as an example, Lori Gentles will be, will be leading the talent management section and really pushing through the various action items related to that particular goal. I'll be leading the organizational culture section as well as the quality services and performance measure component of the plan. And Matt will be leading the technology and facilities component of the plan. So we'll be working collectively to continue to work throughout the organization and ensuring that a number of these items are, are complete. So next steps. We've gathered the info. We've conducted the strategic planning workshop. The implementation action plan is in process and will be done very soon. And then in 2017, working in conjunction again with the department heads and others throughout the organization, as well as our communication manager, we'll be rolling the full plan out to the organization. So that concludes the presentation and overview on the plan. I just wanted to recognize all of the members of the steering committee that played a very active role in the development of the plan and working through the strategic planning day. And I also just wanted to thank our CEO, Mia Sato, for her support throughout this process and of course, the board. We're happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions now from the board? I think we have one public speaker.
We're going to go to Santa Barbara to hear from Ben Romo.
Members of the board, Ben Romo from First Five of Santa Barbara County. I appreciate very much the opportunity to be a part of the strategic planning process and the work that went into it and the, and the product that has come out. You know, we at First Five are a pretty small, well, very small department in the county. We also have a bit of a independent kind of relationship or quasi-independent relationship with the county. So one might think that if, if an agency were to feel somewhat removed from the county family, it might be First Five. And I just want to thank everyone involved in this plan for, for creating the document that gives us something that we can look to, to help, help define our role in the broader organization and to bring us all together around a common set of values and, and kind of purpose statement in the work that we're doing. So just wanted to share that input from the First Five perspective as a member of the broader county family. And thank you.
Thank you. And it's, that's our only public speaker for today, right?
No, no further requests.
Any comments from, any board members? Supervisor Williams?
I think Supervisor and Adam and I are planning to grill you guys for the next 20 minutes, but, no, I really appreciate the work.
I'm really tired.
Really, really appreciated. I assume the, the surveys were anonymous? Yeah, I mean, otherwise I would think that everyone would agree 99% with it if they were, weren't anonymous, so it's just, but...
Yes, Supervisor, they were anonymous.
Thanks.
Ms. Nisich, could you describe the process from now till summer rollout and when we see it again and what more we'll see?
Yes, Chair Hartman and board. What we plan to do, as I indicated, we'll be following up on the implementation action plan. We'll be working with the steering committee, reconvening, reconvening the steering committee again, making sure that we are aware of any of the resource allocations that occurred during the budget that might, may or may not impact the planning. As I mentioned, there's 36 distinct action statements in here. We want to make sure all of those are still valid following the budget process. We're also linking this to the rebalancing effort. And you'll see when we talk more about the rebalancing effort during the budget discussions, there's a lot of commonality between the plans, looking at both organization and processes and structure. So we'll be making sure those linkages are there. We'll also be looking to the rebalancing effort to see if there's anything that we need to move into the plan and anything we need to adjust. So once that's all set, we will roll it out to the organization and we're going to use our new intranet, to make sure we're rolling everything out in that method so the employees will see everything through that particular venue.
But it comes back to the board before it goes out to the employees, or?
We had, we had not planned on specifically taking it back to the board, however, if that's your desire.
Chair Hartman and board members, we can certainly give you updates as we go along. This plan is an internal-facing plan, so it was really for our organization, for our employees as part of my duties as a CEO. We created this, started this in 2015. And I want to thank Terry Nisich for leading this. She is the strategic planning maven for the county, having started, done many a times in the past and everyone on the steering committee. And I just want to say, you know, for some people, it sounds like a lot of fluff, but I want to, I want to tell the new board members and the existing board members that the county has never had a common vision, mission, values for the whole county. Individual departments do, but we never had anything for the whole county. And we said in good times and in bad times, it's something to anchor us all, that we're using the same language, we're pointing to the same things to, to help us through, like I said, these challenging times ahead. So we think it is important that we continue in this work.
Thank you. And Supervisor Adam?
Yeah, the only thing, note I was going to pick is, I think it's slide six, where you have the, the mission statement. And 71% of the people surveyed agreed with the mission statement?
75.
75? What happened to the other 25? They can't get on board with that? I mean, I would think that that was like a hundred percenter, right?
Supervisor Adam, I'm not an expert in these processes, but what the consultant told us was that these were pretty good numbers.
Well, yeah, but you're giving them to me, so, you know? I mean, I want to round up these 25% and find out what's wrong with them. You got one oar in the water or what? Shall I make a motion to?
Sure. I have one other comment, but go ahead and make the motion and we'll make it part of...
Well, just to stop staff recommendations.
First, I wanted to say how great it is to see all of you from different departments together, talking to us today. And I think that that is, portends well for future efficiencies and just, if you, if you ever go, if you ever have to go to a hospital, you see the mission statement and, I mean, they really need to be focused around these goals and around the culture. And so I'm a big believer, I understand that this is probably within the CEO's discretion how to move this forward, but I would love to see the actions and have an opportunity just to, to, just to offer some, some of my insights, such as they may be, or maybe other members feel the same way, I'm not sure, but...
Could certainly do that. We'd appreciate any insight from the board.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? Motion passes. So we are on to item number seven.
Chair Hartman, members of the board, item seven, from the Public Works Department and to the board is the Board of Directors of the Water Agency. This is a hearing to consider recommendations regarding the San Ynez River Valley Groundwater Basin Groundwater Sustainability Agency formation. This is in the third and fifth districts.
Mr. Phelan?
Good afternoon, madam chair, members of the board. This is yet a, another item in the continuing items that we're bringing before your board regarding the Sustainable Groundwater Management Act, or SIGMA. This is for the San Ynez eastern portion. Previously, you've heard about the central and western portions. I'll turn the presentation over to Matt Young and Frey Kreese, and all three of us will be available for questions afterwards.
Good afternoon. This item is on the agenda to discuss forming a groundwater sustainability agency, or GSA, in the San Ynez River Valley Groundwater Basin's eastern management area. As we've described in previous briefings, the San Ynez River Water Conservation District, which overlies most of the basin and has been managing groundwater in the area since 1939, has taken the lead role in GSA formation in this basin. The basin has been divided into three management areas, each of which will have its own GSA. This map shows the western management area in blue, the central management area in tan or clear on the, on the screen here, and the eastern management area in green. Your board previously approved GSA formation in both the western and central management areas last December. This map shows the eastern management area in greater detail. In this area, the Water Agency has been coordinating with the San Ynez River Water Conservation District, the San Ynez River Water Conservation District's Improvement District Number One, or ID1, and the City of Solvang to develop a memorandum of agreement to form a GSA. The San Ynez River Water Conservation District is represented by the blue boundary line. You can see that there's this large stippled area in green outside that blue boundary line. This area can only be covered by the county under SIGMA as there's no other public agency We have reached out to representatives of the Chumash, who have expressed interest in participating in an advisory capacity. We have also held public informational meetings on February 16th to offer an opportunity for mutual water companies and members of the public to learn about GSA formation. The proposed MOA provides for the joint management of the area's groundwater. The MOA structure was chosen to minimize administrative and management costs in the near term. The MOA proposes to establish a GSA committee with one appointee from each agency. These appointees would have weighted votes based on rough estimates of groundwater use, with five votes for the Water Agency, three for the San Ynez River Water Conservation District, two for ID1, and one for the City of Solvang. Because we are using the MOA structure rather than a joint powers agreement, appointees will need to obtain direction from their respective boards prior to voting on major decisions. Staff will return with appointee recommendations in all three management areas at a later date. The MOA also calls for establishment of an advisory committee. Possible members include the Chumash, county planning, mutual water companies, agricultural interests, or others as deemed appropriate by the GSA committee. The MOA states that the Water Agency intends to conduct a hydro-geological study in the area. The San Ynez River Water Conservation District has engaged a consultant to conduct a data gap analysis throughout the entire basin, including the eastern management area. We anticipate that this analysis will inform the scope of our hydro-geological study. The Water Agency has conducted studies in other basins and a similar study in this area has been planned for some time. For this, funding for this study will be included in the proposed Water Agency budget for fiscal year 2017, 2018, which will come to your board later this spring. Finally, the MOA has provisions for a possible transition to a joint powers agreement structure if deemed necessary to better collectively manage the basin. Staff recommends that your board approve the MOA and direct... Staff recommends that your board approve the MOA and direct the chair to sign the resolution to form a groundwater sustainability agency in compliance with the Sustainable Groundwater Management Act. We're here for any questions you may have.
Thank you. Any board members? I do have a couple of questions. One, so the county, the Water Agency has one person, but five weighted votes, and because you're not, we're not a JPA, or you're not recommending a JPA, whoever is representing the interest would be coming back to this board on a somewhat regular basis then? Is that correct?
Madam Chair, that's correct.
Let's see, I had another question. Oh, the coordination agreement, could you describe for me a little more how that works?
Certainly. Madam Chair, Supervisors, the Department of Water Resources would like to have a single point of contact for each basin. So in basins such as this, where multiple GSAs are forming, DWR requires that a coordination agreement establish a relationship between each of the GSAs so that they can be assured that they're using similar models, similar data, similar processes, and that that all gets fed to the Department of Water Resources through a single source, which in this case would be the Saninaz River Water Conservation District.
Okay. Any other thoughts or comments? Well, I just, I think this has been one of the best GSA formations, the smoothest, and I think a lot of credit goes to Mr. Bruce Wales and his team because it was a lot of public work and outreach, and I thank you for your efforts.
Let's wait for May 9th when Koyama gets here, then.
Okay, may I have a motion? I won't follow that up. All those who are in favor, say aye. Any opposed? And there were no public comments. So that concludes our agenda for today, and we meet next on Monday, starting with our budget workshops. So we are joined.